Let's call the May 13th, Land Commission Work Session to order. Looks like we've got several members missing, but we do have a quorum, so let's get on with it then. Any questions before we let John take over? John, please.
We're scheduled till eight-ish.
Eight-ish, yeah.
And in that time, we'll get through one and a half articles, which means we'll be done. We'll do that, and Matt, talk about the math. Okay, and we'll see. I think the rest of this ought to go perhaps even easier than it did before. We left off with fencing and screening, section 3.107, which is about page 40 in your...
Do we actually do signs?
I have a question going back to signs, and also I guess it pertains to the fences. We have a sign here in town that irritates me beyond belief, and I look in the sign ordinances, and there's nothing about it. But I go to 3.107.09, and it said, "Fences are not used for signage." I believe that verbiage belongs in signs, because when I look for signs, it's not there. And it's a sign that irritates me, not the fence.
I know which one you're talking about.
I think everybody in here knows which one I'm talking about.
Which one are you talking about?
The powdercoater. This whole fence is a sign, and it's a ragged-looking mess. And if you look under signs, it's not a prohibited sign, but if you go to fences, it's a prohibited sign. So I would like to see that verbiage moved.
If we concur, then it should be prohibited sign. It should be...
Well, it says it's prohibited, but it says it under fences, not under signs.
Anyone have any objection to adding that?
No.
All right, I am going to add yet as...
Where are we putting it?
Oh, it'll be...
I think it should go at 3.106.07.
Yeah, and it'll be Q, fences or signs mounted on fences.
Did we approve that on the... the Memphis Food Court?
Yes.
It's on a fence, sir?
No, we approved it to be on a fence, then they mounted it somewhere that wasn't on the fence in violation of their approval, but that's a different story.
They mounted it on the...
We approved it to be on the fence.
They were sitting outside?
Well, they got like 11 signs approved.
Sixteen.
How's it looking?
I haven't stopped there.
Leave it alone.
But do they have no code violations, I'll stop there and eat.
No, we're good.
I don't know if I ever will.
I mean, unless I include it.
Okay, I have one other question for you. On 3.108.03, I'm seeing a 40-foot frontage to a street. I thought that was supposed to be 25 feet. What are we going to do on our cul-de-sacs? Are those houses going to have to have a 40-foot frontage to the road? It's going to be pretty tough on some of those...
He said, "Page 45."
Well, he said we were beyond that.
I don't think he...
No, we're...
We haven't gotten there yet.
...and then we'll get to it.
Okay.
Yeah, so we haven't got there, so we're on page 40 now.
Sorry's no better.
We're still on 40.
Yeah, or 41, page 41.
I got you.
Yeah, fencing and screening is page 40.
We call it page 41.
We got 41 in there. That's why you chose the page 42 on mine, because we all have it, so... About page 40, give or take a couple.
41.
3.107. This requires a fence permit.
Which we don't have.
And that is a question. That's why I asked that.
Yeah.
There is no fence permit now. Tell us, Matt, what's the purpose of having a fence permit?
To assure that new fences comply. Did I get that question correctly, Professor?
Is that a final exam question?
It sounded like it.
Sounds like you tore down a fence.
Okay, communities have wrestled with this, because it's a way to assure fences are built code, in theory. Of course, I think a lot of people just go put their fence up and don't even think about coming to City Hall, so then you end up after the fact trying to deal with it. Though if you make sure your fence contractors know, then that might take care of a lot of the issue. The other way to do it is to not require a permit and just make it an enforcement issue after the fact, and also to have really good handouts at City Hall to guide people on how to build a fence. Two ways to approach it. You think it'd be best to have a permit, because that way it...
Over-the-counter, type 1, issued by Jake, yeah.
I agree, I think that'd be best.
You would, yes.
We had this discussion a couple of years ago, back when Steve was here. He really wanted a permit. He had a whole lot of verbiage in there that we didn't agree with, but, you know, we talked about whether or not we wanted a permit, and we really just said, you know, "Let's just have some good guidelines, and then do what we did before." As far as, you know, if they don't abide by it, then we go after it, but I don't know.
So are we going to be penalizing people to build a fence without a permit?
Usually, no. Usually, if it doesn't comply, then they might have to fix that, which would be a punishment in and of itself.
Which is basically what we're doing now, without a permit.
Right.
I mean, the action of a permit, what's that going to change for us?
Hopefully, it would mean that they would comply before they built it.
I agree completely, but everybody that's built in this neighborhood for the last 20 years has no idea that fencing permits required. Are you going to tell them when they apply for a building permit that they're going to need a fencing permit at some point? Because they're not going to build it, the homeowner's going to build it once they move in. I'm just, I'm wondering how we're going to enforce this. Please, go ahead. You're the one that's going to be stuck with it.
Well, it's like when we implemented the grading permit, kind of the same thing. It's like, well, if someone goes and does put up a fence without us knowing about it and conflicts their code, we may never know about it if it hurt, but if they go and put up a fence that doesn't comply with the code and need to get a permit, it's on them, but hey, we could have told you what you did wrong, or we... The purpose of the permit, I think, grading permit was to try to actually help the person who's doing the work have some protection, and prevent them from doing something that damages somebody else's property, but also to give them a heads-up, so they didn't have to tear that out later, in a code violation. So the administration part of it is kind of a pain to be the way, but I guess that's...
I have trouble liking it to a grading permit, because so much damage can be done with a grading permit. And with a fencing permit, I don't see that as quite the same issue. I understand the sightline sort of thing.
Yeah, the two areas of the site, when they're on corners especially, and then the height. Those are the two things that we run into the most, where they might have to actually go tear something out after they built it.
Well, I don't have a hard feeling one way or another, I just, I hate to over-regulate.
Right.
And that's coming from a former builder, so is that jaded a little bit, maybe?
Well, I think that's something that could be passed out when the building permits are issued, and then builders can pass that on to the occupants.
We've already got a handout for it.
If we can mitigate somebody having to tear their fence out, I mean...
Well, then if you start negotiating on keeping it or destroying it, or making them take out, then you're creating another whole bag of worms, because he got away with it, why can't I do it? So, you know, it's push-pull.
Well, hopefully, it's as clear as, well, he complied, you didn't.
That's it, yeah.
Hopefully, yeah.
For me, the problem is, is that every single house is building a fence. So that means every single building permit that you're dealing with, you're now going to have to go have a second permit that you're going to have to do, and that's way more administration. That's where I'm coming from.
I think the way John wrote this is, it would be a permit issued by us, not by the county, so it wouldn't be as onerous, because Jake wouldn't have to send it on to the county to get a building permit for the fence. He would just look at the counter, over the counter, and say, "Yes, you're within your lot, yes, it's lower than six feet, yes, it's in approved materials," if we get to that, I don't know if we get to that level or not, and so...
But he has to go out and look at it, he can't do it over the counter. He can't go out and look at something if it's permitted and you're signing off.
Well, the fence permit would come before you built the fence.
Right. And just look at a sketch of where the fence was gone.
Yeah, and I don't think it would need an inspection if you approved it. It's a self-correcting problem. If a neighbor complains, and we pull out what we approved in the file, a copy of what was in the file. But in theory, they get it before they build.
Okay.
My only issue is the time restraints on staff, and I wasn't even going to the fact that it was going to county. I'm just talking about what it would do to this, to this office, and that's my, that's my pushback, is I'm worried about the workload.
How many permits are we issuing to build this year? How many houses are we going to build?
I don't know. We're actually a little, little behind where we were right now last year. So I think total, we're at just over 100?
So you'll have 100 additional coming in.
Well, I'm saying total permits.
He's saying you're going to get 100 additional building permits, or fence permits.
Because everybody's going to put in a fence.
Everybody.
Because we're about 125 houses per year for the last three years, on average. So, yeah, you, yeah.
And I realize that's only 10 or 15 minutes of your time, right in the middle of another project.
But what's easier, to do that up front at the desk, or to drive out and check for code infractions?
How many fence complaints have we had this, in the last year? I think like two?
I mean, we've got, we've got further signs right across the street.
And that complaint-driven gets us in trouble, though, which allows you promote.
I was just saying, like, General and I, we've responded to maybe two or three in the last year of fence complaints that are too tall. That gives you like a volume-wise of how many complaints we get, and one of them, I know one specific one that we asked them to lower it down, because it was eight, or seven or eight-foot tall fence, and...
Yeah, I...
That was the wagon wheel.
I don't know that, from a staff standpoint, we have a strong opinion either way, because either way, we deal with it, and whether or not we're right.
I guess it's tough to argue that it's necessary if you've only had two problems, but...
I don't think, John has one favorable method versus another. You could certainly have the standards in here, not require the permit, and then still deal with it on a code enforcement basis.
So where is staff's head on this? I mean, because I can go either way with it, I just am trying to limit... If you only have having two or three complaints a year, I would think that would be a lot less staff time than doing all of these permits for all these houses we're building. So I don't know.
That doesn't necessarily mean they're doing it right, that means nobody's complained that much.
I understand.
That's true, too.
No, I understand.
Yeah, but, but they're not going out to inspect what's been done anyway, so they still don't know if it's been done right. It'd been known that people have been given the right information, but that doesn't mean they've followed it.
But don't you think it's a good tool to...
Is this something that staff would like to have?
Approach it up front, up front before they even build it.
Yeah.
Well, we need to put this to rest, because we can argue on this all night.
I know. Can we ask a question, Jake? How many people come in asking for information about how and where to build a fence?
In the summertime, probably like at least one a week, every other week. Like during the build season, when people are actually going to be out there building their fence, not in December, no one's doing that, but during the middle of the summer, when people are moving in, or they moved in and they're looking to build a fence, pretty frequent, either a phone call or someone stopping by. And I'll chat with them about it, I'll tell them what the regulations are, and usually I don't hear a complaint about them, so... If someone's that don't check, they just go and build their seven-foot or eight-foot tall fence.
With reeds or wire.
Yeah, I haven't had that.
I think the most important thing is getting the information to people to do it right in the first place, unless we're trying to fire at...
Yeah, when we sent out, when we sent out the accessory...
Accessory structure?
Yeah, accessory structure flyer with our utility billing, that we have prompted a lot of questions, and people that were going to build something now had a bunch of questions about it, and we've had folks come in, it's been really helpful. But I think we've talked about doing one for fencing, I think you have it.
It's written, I'm just waiting to fill in the blanks, depending on what we approve in the code tonight.
So we could do, we could do that, we could just blast it, like print it off and mail it out to everyone. It's not going to cost us anything extra in postage, because we're already mailing out the bills. It'll get to 95% of the residents, so...
I would like to see a good handout, and I won't argue anymore, I promise.
His handouts are pretty good, we have a handful of examples of them, so...
Well, it sounds like, keep the standards, but don't require a permit, that's what I'm hearing.
That's what I'm hearing. Is that what you're hearing?
Do we need to vote on it? Because I'm not hearing what yours, I didn't hear what yours...
No, I agree with you, I'm, either way, I just...
How many of you think we should do away with the permit, not have it?
Well, we don't have a permit now.
Well, I'm talking about having one. Are you in favor, against?
I'm against.
You're against?
No permit.
No permit.
No permit.
I don't see much permit just to mitigate the problems, but...
Well, let's do it with handouts then.
Okay.
It is deleted from the draft.
Well, leave the standards.
Oh, yeah, definitely the standards are there. Okay, the new section 1, placement of fencing on both rights of weir-earsements, most of this is just kind of boilerplate language.
One of the... If I'm looking under general requirements, C, it talks about eight-foot fences.
Yeah, which means it needs a building permit, anything over six.
Yep. No.
Yes.
Is it six?
When it does, it talks about six.
Big law seven, but...
Yeah, I knew that it changed and vacillated, so I don't believe you know.
I just know, I just know in previous life design, anything over six feet, we had to have an engineered stamp line that put limitations if it was over six feet, so...
Is that what it is?
But that was, because I'm learning about every person.
Why don't we just research that, see what Lynn County says, and then, so where it says eight feet, we just change that based on...
Well, actually, we have a copy of the...
I was going to say, we could do a fencing permit for like commercial industrial, where that would be like an engineered stamp.
Yeah.
You know, are we, we talked about materials, for fences, and in our drafts, we had talked about inserting a hedge in the language, and we don't have it in the...
We agree on six.
I wondered if that was...
But I think it's going to probably be six.
We want to do that in there.
That sounds to me, yeah.
I think that's what, he's going to see what the Lynn County requires.
Okay. Got it.
Because some of those can get pretty high.
Yeah, and the industrial, commercial zones, we allow them to be eight-foot in height. Residential zones, that's six.
No, that's not what it says.
That's not what it says. No, you're right, it's eight. Miniature sections are limited to six, but it's eight here.
Well, it's always been six here.
Oh, so this is a higher fence.
No, residential says six.
No.
Look at point 204.
No, one oh four C does say eight.
Yeah, it says eight, it doesn't say six.
So does, so does A.
It all says eight.
It's only...
B is eight.
That's funny, mine over here says, but residential says six.
ABC has eight.
Okay, so eight, it's where it's drafted. We're okay with that?
No, where's that?
Yeah.
That's residential.
Six is more of a conventional height. Eight is, I don't know, there's a lot of jurisdictions I think have gone to eight, reflecting more enclosed courtyards and things like that, but it's your call, whatever you think's right for Miller's.
Now, are we still talking residential?
Yeah.
That's oh four.
Yes. It's drafted at eight, can always change this after the hearing process, of course. Should we just change it to six now, or are you wanting to stick with eight for now?
Has it been six?
Yes.
You know what the current code says?
Current says six.
Yeah.
She got it open.
Well, I don't like fences anyway, so I...
Commercial or industrial property can have a high fences, seven street racing yard, or they, or they're six. The residential is always six.
Keep it six, come in.
Let's keep it six.
I think six. I think so, I think so.
I get more balls over from the neighbor's yard, definitely. I got a basket full of them.
All right, industrial, commercial fencing can go up to 10 feet on property lines within the zone.
See, we have eight.
We have eight. We had a different height for retaining wall also. We had four feet, and we don't have retaining wall in there.
Okay, we want, yeah, four feet for a retaining wall, existing code.
And I think it, I had it under 107.02 from the last time.
What's the height for the retaining wall?
It says four.
Where are you finding it? I'm not seeing that.
We discussed it when we were going over the first track.
Something over four feet requires structural engineering.
Yeah, basically it requires a, effectively a building permit on four feet.
Well, in structural engineering, you go with that, I assume.
So you want in the, in oh two to include retaining walls not exceeding four feet in height? Or is it any retaining wall? I mean, I'm not sure where you're going with that.
Well, I'm not either, because when I write notes for when we discuss things, they're just notes, no explanation.
Well, this is talking about right-of-ways or easements, and you wouldn't want any retaining walls on those, on oh two.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of it.
And be, and find the... Or five.
Yeah.
Retaining walls, because what they would apply to private property.
We have one down in Alexandria, we have a retaining wall.
I guess, I guess the point is, do you want to regulate the height of the retaining wall, sort of low as down there? And you think existing code adds that?
No.
It does?
I don't believe it does. We just discussed it, and why you brought it up.
Well, it's sometimes an issue if you have a retaining wall that's five feet high, and then somebody comes in and puts their eight-foot fence on top of the retaining wall, thinking that they're besting the system, and you've got this monolithic, you know, 20-foot wall on your property line.
That's true.
That might require some clarification.
Well, that's where we can get at that by saying that fences have to be installed on original grade or something.
You know, Lynn, you want structural calculations on retaining wall over certain heights?
Over four feet is required. And I think maybe, we're saying retaining walls, but this section, like the walls serving fencing purposes, so whether they're retaining walls or not, if they're four feet tall, they got to be designed.
Very likely says in Millersburg, where you would build a retaining wall.
That's the thing, in this community, we're so flat.
Well, there's a lot of them.
I was going to say, I think in Alexandria, there may be some.
Being tall, right?
Well, I think, let me suggest that as long as you can't build a fence on top of a retaining wall, because what it says right now is fence height shall be measured from undisturbed ground level, top of sidewalk, or street grade, so therefore, you could build it on top of the retaining wall.
We've seen, there's several, there's several examples of where someone like will level off their backyard, put a retaining wall in, and put a six-foot fence on top of that.
So we built the retaining wall up.
So adjacent to the road, that's clear, because you build up your five feet of the road, like a retaining wall, you measure it from the ground, from the road.
Right.
But when you're between lots, and we have this stair-step lot in a lot of places, well, what was the undisturbed ground? Who knows, you put the subdivision one in, and then you build the house, and then you have this terrace thing, and you build a fence at the top, because that's how you...
Is that so bad, in between houses on a terrace subdivision, to have a fence on top of a retaining wall?
There's, I think of like, like down, down this Tucker right now, there's a handful of lots, Becker Ridge Phase 4 goes up the hills, and the lots are coming down like this, so you want like a two-foot tall fence over here, and then these guys are looking down on their neighbors, so it's like...
Same right over on 54.
You got some problem with Lone Oak?
Yeah, yeah, Lone Oak is going to be another one. I mean, they have, they have a four-foot retaining wall that was built into the subdivision, so...
What if we come up with something that restricts the height for retaining walls that are along the front of the property, not just the side and the rear?
Or a quarter lot adjacent to a sidewalk?
Mm-hmm, adjacent to a sidewalk.
But I think you've got...
Well, you've got a note on...
107.03G.
G, yeah, but, you know, you're saying, we don't know the undisturbed ground level, so I'm going to probably be a little more...
Well, we've also got 3107.7C, Presentation Streets, fencing placed along Old Salem or Conser require conditional use permit.
Yeah, but, well, you know, we wrote it to say, you measure it from undisturbed ground level, top of sidewalk, or street grade, maybe that's obvious enough to cover those circumstances.
Is there ever a situation where you have two of those existing in the same project?
Yeah, I'm sitting here thinking...
And if that's the case, which...
Whichever is...
Yeah, whichever is highest, yes.
But, but are people going to push back, saying, well, that's not really a fence? I mean, are we going to get into that kind of situation, you know, where...
The retaining wall is a fence?
Yes, yes.
Could you just define what a fence is, or define that a retaining wall is included within this fencing and screening statute?
Yes, let's take a reading.
Is it, okay?
Yeah, definition of fence, let's just check.
Sorry, it tells me your general requirements is that.
A fence or...
A wall is considered a fence, and shall be built consistent with the applicable fencing requirements.
Yeah, but, okay, it says, that's a wall, that's different than a retaining wall.
That should be building like a center block.
So it's any fence or wall constructed in such a manner as to obstruct vision, at least 80% when viewed from a 90-degree angle. That's the definition of fence, wall, side obscuring. And that's the only definition of fence we really have.
So that wouldn't include a, it says side obscure, it defines, it limits it to side obscure, so it does not include like a, a woven wire fence?
Yeah, yeah, in fact, I'm thinking there might need to be a...
Well, that was one of my questions, too, was chain link. I didn't know if chain link was a permitted use, it doesn't say anywhere in here if it is or isn't.
What about the proposed manufactured home park, where there's all these houses up here, and then the homes supposedly down here? Are they going to, do they want to put retaining walls, and then, I need to have my fencing, because these people are looking straight.
Let's don't talk, let's don't talk about that particular project, but let's talk about other projects which might be similar to that. So our discussion should not focus on that project.
Sure.
Okay, so a situation where you are building a house, and there's another house behind you in a raised elevation, right?
So you like, Lone Oak, for example, is a good one?
Yes, like Lone Oak, right.
Or North Oak, if we're...
Yeah, retaining walls are not...
So, yeah, that's, that's, if you want to provide a provision in there for some, that situation, you can.
Is there in here a definition of a retaining wall?
No.
Probably not.
As I'm looking for it, the only, the only thing I'm seeing is wall, and how do you differentiate between a wall and a retaining wall?
Yeah, they're definitely different.
I would think. I mean, I think we need, I think we need to...
Well, if they had a definition of retaining wall, that'd be easy to do.
Yeah.
And at that point, we can decide where we want the fence to go, and which side of that retaining wall.
Wouldn't you call some of those a retaining wall, like you say?
Well, when you have...
We got them out here now, they got Jersey barriers, and the lots are sitting like this with a Jersey barrier there. Now, he's going to want to, the pill people are going to want to build a fence up there.
They want their six-foot fence, which is 10 feet above...
So that's going to be 10, six plus four, quite whatever it is, you're going to have a 10-foot fence.
The retaining wall, I'll add a definition, but I'm going to yank it right out of building code.
I think we're going to have to leave with some of that.
So do you want to add a proviso that says you shouldn't be putting a screening fence on top of a retaining wall where it faces the street, and just leave it at that? So in between homes, it's fine, but on the end, at a street view where the public has to deal with it? It can't be, you know, 16-foot monolith?
Well, what does that mean, though?
Yeah, that's a problem on a corner lot.
Well, we can have a restriction of three feet on an interior fence from the front.
Yeah, I mean, what we have to say maybe in definition of fence is a fence on a front property line, or a... or a property line adjacent to a street includes the aggregate height of retaining wall.
Oh, I love that.
Yes.
Yes, let's do that, that's great.
Yeah, because now if a person wants to move two-foot picket fence on top of their four-foot wall, fine, you know?
Yeah, I see what you're saying, that would work.
Yeah. Because this would... If this is their frontage, right?
I think their dogs can get out.
This is where...
And they go in the back.
If you want us an example of this, there's one on the corner of Tuscan Loop and Sedona, where this... He actually just built a large RV structure. Anyways, around the corner, he has a... About a four-foot-tall retaining wall, and on top of that, he put a six-foot-tall fence. So if you wanna see...
You can see it right out the back door here, just look down the street. It's right next door to me.
Yeah.
It's a four-foot retaining wall with a six-foot fence on it. He lives on a cul-de-sac, it's across his back and coming down the side, but as he gets close to the corner, he steps it down so that he's not obscuring anybody's vision. And so he is on a property line next to a sidewalk for half of his property line, probably 10 feet high. But it's not a problem at all.
Yeah, so this would restrict that.
Well, he couldn't have done it.
Yeah.
And he's got an RV parked up there, so his RV's actually behind the fence. So it's probably more pleasant that it's there. It's in your daughter's cul-de-sac, leading into it.
I'm sorry, where it is?
The city of Millersburg could finish every sentence...
Well, there's another one, RV 34, that's near Blakeback there, and he's got probably a four, five-foot retaining wall and an eight-foot fence on top of it.
Well, when you talk about putting a fence on top of a wall, there's some detail there, but... So if this is your wall, you put your fence on top of your wall, you put your fence on top of your wall. This is what your grade does. If you put your fence back here, your fence is not on top of your wall. Elevation-wise, it ends up the same, but that's...
But they're two separate entities in that part.
You're absolutely right. They're one sitting right next to the other. It's not actually on top of the retaining wall.
Yeah, and this is more often what people do, because this is more expensive to build.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, he didn't do it on... I think he did it off the wall, but yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, and then often, people do this with blocks, and they'll step it out.
Yep.
So, and then there's a difference right here.
And we haven't addressed it to that.
I mean, we have to allow these people to build fences for these weird lots somehow, where we are tying their hands, you know? And I don't think the guy's lot looks bad by your place, but it looks good.
Yeah, he's done a nice job of it.
Nice job.
Well, it sounds like we might have an answer then. Maybe you guys don't have any objection to fences on retaining walls?
I guess that's the terminology. It's not truly on the wall, it's next to the wall. But I don't know what difference it would make if they put stirrups there and put the four-by-four on top, or because it's just stacked blocks, you can't really do that, because the block could fall off. But if it were poured in place, he certainly could've.
You know what? I'm gonna broaden this out even, because you could also build a berm and build it on top of the berm. You could do a retaining wall and set it, the fence back three feet, and we get to the circumstances you just said.
We're not supposed to be beating each other.
But it's already carried over again, but... So it made the manly end today?
Well, we've seen, and this is a question that's come up, push back on it, is a situation like this, where this was how the developer left it, or the builder left, and the homeowner, "Okay, I wanna come in and do this, build my little wall here." And, you know, it's like, "That's great, that happens all the time." Well, then, my neighbor did that, but I don't wanna do that. I just wanna build my fence the same height as them. And I was like, "You can't do that, because..."
Yeah. That wouldn't be allowed.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's fine, I don't think... I'm not saying we should change that, I'm just saying this is a question that comes up. And the answer would be...
One for variance!
Ah!
Well, the answer would be, well, they're not... Their fence isn't that height.
Thousand platters just died.
They're... They'll be on ground, but not that height, I mean, it'd be insane.
That one specifically, they wanna put a gate in that matched the same height, but it, I mean, it would've been to the... Almost to the bottom of their roof, it would've been like an eight or nine foot tall. Yeah.
Right. All right, I'll play with this one.
A nice handle, that's all we need.
Proposal for you.
Specific detail.
Can't cover everyone. I don't think.
That was fun. Just talking with staff in Sweet Home, I don't know how long would it take to do a development code update, kind of from scratch? And I said, "Well, probably at least six months, probably more," and they were past, I thought it'd take ninety days.
Oh, jeez!
And I said, "Writing the text is the easy part, it's this that's the hard..." I mean, this is what they taught, and they can't control that. I told them probably eight years.
Once we get ours done, you can sell it to them and discount our price.
That's my plan. What? Oh, no, the first part of that sounds good.
Good idea, wasn't it? I said, "Once we get done with ours, we'll sell it to them, and then he can discount our price, which we've already paid for."
I'm just trying to think of some example for your industry. For your development practice, and then you go in. Yeah, anyway. Okay. How about fencing requirements in residential zones? We've just lowered it to six feet. Commercial zones...
Well, we also have... We also have two different types of fences within A. And two different heights, which we don't have in our new one. We have the three-foot interior fence, non-vision fences. And then open vision fences, they can be four feet.
In existing code?
You forgot.
No. Well, this is the first draft that you gave us. In December.
And it reads differently now?
It reads, "Interior lot, solid or closed, non-vision fences to a height of three feet, or open vision fences to a height of four feet."
I think in your discussion, you decided not to do the four-foot one.
Okay.
Just to simplify.
That works for me.
Actually, frankly, I think... Three feet's pretty short for that.
Well, I thought we had decided on four feet for everything in the front. Because if they were to let their dog out in the front yard in the fence, I mean, they have a fence. They're not gonna keep him in.
Four feet, three feet? We're talking the white picket fence in front of the house.
Would you like four?
Yeah.
Four is fine.
Would you like four? We like four, I guess.
Okay.
How about the eight? We changed that eight to, uh...
Six.
Six. Okay.
And we did that, that's the commercial zones, or six. And then in B, we did eight, which is in existing codes.
Fine. Three foot, 107.05.
Yes, B.
We're changing that to eight.
But that's what you told me to do.
We had... We had eight in the first draft.
On...
Right, but in the second draft, we have it down at 10, so did we ask him to raise it? So there could be eight plus two of barbed wire?
That I don't know. I just know this says eight and this says 10.
Right, but the 10 is the newer version.
Yeah.
I think we wanted to go eight feet plus two with the barbed wire, but that had to be at least 72 inches above the ground. How high do you have the fences around your trucks?
Five feet with barbed wire.
That's including the barb?
Yeah.
And you're satisfied with that?
Well, the 10 doesn't necessarily... If you want barbed wire, it's included in the 10.
Right.
But that doesn't...
Right, it would be included in the 10.
But that doesn't say, uh, that you have to have barbed wire. Or that if you don't have barbed wire, it's eight. This isn't saying that.
No, you're right, it does not.
Yeah, so it can be a 10-foot fence, either way.
Yeah, I think...
Okay.
The eight is fine.
What's... That's what I'm...
A 10.
Fence you want in the commercial industrial zone? It was 10. Earlier this evening, the truck came to consensus at eight.
What's the standard? What is everybody else's?
Eight.
Yeah.
I don't see a need for anything higher than eight.
Why don't we go eight, including wire?
Yeah, it's eight, including wire.
Yeah. You wanna put...
All right, eight it is. Pressing on. See anything else in there? There's a section on pathway fencing, which has to do with fences along public paths that are between houses or whatever. Nothing here doing here, just a lone barbed wire for the... Get the building here, it's two and a half acre, a lot smaller. We have a number of folks with animals that have barbed wire. We just installed some barbed wire ourselves recently.
I don't think there's any restrictions on where you can and can't use barbed wire based on this.
I don't see any restrictions, that's my discretion. Well, in commercial industrial zones, it says barbed wire has to be at least 72 inches above grade where it starts. In our rural residential zones, I mean, if there's only kind of might be... It doesn't restrict it at all. That's all I'm suggesting, we're not restricted.
Yeah, we have to be careful, because what we're written right now, we're not allowing animals on those two-and-a-half-acre lots. We'll get to that.
It's on my list.
Okay. Go through, talking about walls. Fence advertising or signage, there you go. We just created that section.
My suggestion on that is perhaps to delete the word permanently, just because it's... No signage may be installed on fencing except for directional. Because if you put permanently, people are gonna wonder, argue, "What's permanently?"
The point.
So I just said, if you...
Thank you.
Delete that?
Thank you.
You delete that? Okay.
Yeah.
And soil pools are in here. Doesn't building code cover soil pools?
I... My note actually says that. Building permit issued doesn't need to be in land use.
Right, so I would just take that out.
So when this talks about, um, no signs on fencing except for directional purposes, I mean, you can say, you can have the name of your company and have an arrow or...
Yeah, maybe you can.
Why would you want to?
Sign code provisions in this code, but I guess this is the sign code provision, isn't it?
Yes.
So, but that's a good point. Yeah, maybe you'd say Billy Bob's haircuts and pointing that way. Yeah. Maybe, do we want to...
Or your favorite sign could say...
Yeah, your favorite sign, yeah.
That's directional.
But it also says that it shall not be used for advertising purposes, that's... No.
Except for directional purposes.
You're right, you're right.
Well, we could take directional purpose out.
Take it out, the whole business gone, and then I'm happy.
What if an industry needs to have something greater than what we're allowing in here, ID, an electrified fence, or other things for security? They're required to have it under national security issues. And have to have signs posted on it, to mean they're national security issues.
And there's a platoon of rules here.
Wouldn't meet the findings for variance.
Yeah, it would, I would think.
No, I'm saying it wouldn't.
Why?
But there's nothing in the variance criteria that says unless feds trump you.
But I do know, I don't know if they have it on there, so, but you know, we have one industry that, um, one of the facilities in Albany is electrified and monitored and...
Well, I don't think there's anything in here that says you can't electrify it, but it still couldn't be higher than eight feet, based on the way this is written.
No, but he's saying that people have to have signs on it if it's an electric fence. And we're saying we can't hang a sign.
So are you talking about where we're talking about advertising or signage? I guess you're talking about under 09.
I'm just thinking, do we need to have something where there is...
Yeah.
You know, if there was a federal requirement...
Right, right.
...that we need for...
You could just say anything higher than that needs a conditional use permit.
Well, what if instead it said, "Accordingly, no signage may be installed on fencing except for directional purposes or advisory purposes about privacy and safety and no..." None of those exceeding more than one square foot or two square feet.
I could see you putting the handicap sign on a chain link fence or a no parking here sign, or on a chain link fence.
Or a radiation sign or something.
That would be appropriate on a chain link fence, I think.
Well, they're not usually much bigger than that.
Exactly. That's what I'm thinking.
We got...
You could just say non-advertising informational signs.
But, but I think...
Now you're regulating content, though.
Yeah, her point though is, yeah, non-advertising, but if you're pointing to Billy Bob's haircuts, you got Billy Bob with a big arrow pointing at him.
Yeah, see, that's a problem. But at the same time...
You define...
You know, in the case, they give a directional sign on a post out side, you just don't put them on the fence.
And why do we have to accommodate federal law? They're gonna do what they're gonna do, and they're gonna tell us they really don't care what our little ordinance says.
Yeah, you're correct. Yeah, you're correct.
You know, we get carried away sometimes here.
Well, what I'm referring to is private business, that have federal contracts.
Right.
Part of me that...
Right.
That asylum came in and wanted you to come and take us to castle, but if we don't allow it...
No, they're just gonna hang the signs, and when we tell them to take it down, they're gonna say the federal law requires it, and you can't tell me to take it down.
Well...
I mean, that's a... That's a pretty short discussion.
Maybe we need to define what directional purposes, let's see.
I think you guys are having very different conversations. I don't think he's talking about directional signs, he's talking about signs in general.
No, I understand, there are two issues, I see. The directional signs, as well as the, just the signage that's non-directional, but it's required by federal requirements.
Well, John and I are trying to stay away from regulating the content of any sign, 'cause that gets you a quick hand slap from the state. that gets you a quick hand slap from the state.
Yeah.
It's not just about the signs, though, it's also about height potentially, and that's why if we add a conditional use, we have to take care of that.
Could be the highest, could be the barbed wire on the fence for friends and stuff.
Well, what if we just eliminated it for directional purposes? If they need a directional sign, they have to put it in the ground.
That's a good thing.
Yeah, I think-
That's probably a good idea.
That's better, yeah.
Just get that off of the fences altogether.
But I think if we had advisory things like, such as no trespassing, no such sign shall exceed two square feet, or something just to create a bucket those kind of miscellaneous signs might go into, you know, it's not going to be that big a deal, but it resolves a question, a question.
I'm fine with those, I'm fine with those two square foot signs.
Well, what if you just take out directional purposes?
Then it requires a building permit.
Yeah. Well, that I understand. How about this? No signage may be installed on fencing except for advisory purposes per ends such as quote, no trespassing enclosed per end, which I know is constant, but it's alright.
It's alright.
Consistent with the sign code provisions in this code, it says no such sign shall exceed two square feet and no such sign shall be located closer than twenty feet from any other sign posted on the same fence.
Thank you.
Just do that.
Thank you.
Pick a number, twenty?
I have a bunch of like two foot-
Well, exactly.
Make like a really big sign out of a bunch of small signs. Just two foot large. Yeah.
Okay?
Twenty feet probably sounds good.
And then for swimming pools, I changed it to say all swimming pools shall be enclosed by a fence conforming to the apartments of the residential or commercial structural specialty codes.
You don't want to just delete that whole section?
Well, I put it there just for advisory reasons.
Okay.
Just in case someone's looking, or you don't remember someday or something. Sometimes it might be better to do that than just taking it out altogether.
I have a question.
Well, that was our first section.
I still have one more thing.
Oh, you're not done yet.
Sorry, John.
You just think you're done.
I just, I had just had a compliance issue or, on 10708, who decides what's a monotonous wall and? I guess it's just a-
Yeah, that's a great question.
It's subjective.
Well, it is, but then it goes on to define what you do to keep it from being monotonous.
Okay, so that's my, that's my question, is in the old draft, you had one hundred feet.
Fine.
And this time you have three hundred, and I don't remember us discussing that to change it, did we discuss it to change it?
No, please sir. But I also don't think John's going to be offended if you tell him one hundred instead of three hundred.
Not in the least.
I'm the same one, see. I'm the same on your own.
I'm not, three hundred feet.
Yeah, see, our old draft said one hundred, so.
Sounds like it.
Yeah.
Well, maybe you could put that back to one hundred.
It's a good thing somebody's checking you.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, one hundred.
Well, I don't know which is right, I just don't remember.
There's no right.
It's one hundred because he said so, carry on.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Perfect.
The distance you pick dictates how much you care about your community. Three hundred means you don't care very much, one hundred means you care medium, fifty means you really care.
So we need to change it to fifty?
I didn't say that.
Twenty-five.
Ready to talk about land divisions?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, starts out with definitions. Yeah, a lot of this is, you know, best practices, what your code was actually very good with this, so it's reflecting a lot of that. There's that section under 3.108.03, standard for lots and parcels under a minimum lot area, where you said that access easements or the access strip to a flag lot shall not be included in the calculation of lot area. That's, that's unique, that's, first time I've seen that in code, but we're setting the standard here.
Were we talking about for a single individual flag lot, or were we talking about for access that serve multiple lots, where we have two behind one?
Could be.
I believe we were, I think if it's a single lot, I think that access does include the square footage of the lot.
Well, the way that the commission discussed it was to take that out of the calculation, be it one or two in a partition. Ends up a bigger lot in that way.
Uh-huh, by a lot.
Yeah, by the, yeah, a hundred foot deep lot, twenty-five feet-
Yeah, that's a lot of-
Twenty-five hundred feet of lost square footage.
Can we go-
Okay.
Can we go back up-
We did go through that before.
Can we go back up to serial partition? So it says that if it results in the creation of a large parcel that can be subsequently divided, so that there potentially could be more than three parcels from the original, the request shall be processed on the subdivision, that is not what we're doing now.
Right.
I am not disagreeing that we shouldn't do this. But I think the way we have it right now is, they can subdivide every calendar year.
That's state law.
And they're getting away with that, so this is totally against that.
That's right. This, this eliminates the problems of serial partitions where you don't have the same degree of review or design standards, that kind of thing. It's just saying that if there's a remnant parcel that's left, that's big enough to divide again, you treat it just like a subdivision and process it as a subdivision.
Meaning?
Well, it could end up being a through lot subdivision, at that point.
Sure, sure.
So meaning that we're putting in city streets?
Mm-hmm.
And we're putting in city utilities, not private utilities?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'm just, I, I am totally for that.
Yeah, I'm sure now.
I am totally for that, I'm just asking the question because-
Yeah, utilities would be required, public utilities are required, it would, not necessarily a street, but I tell you, if, if it was a long deep parcel, an acre, and you're dividing two ten thousand foot, oh, looks like even bigger than that, two ten thousand foot lots on the front, leaving forty thousand or a hundred thousand behind, you wouldn't want that narrow flag lot strip, you wouldn't want that to be a full street going to the back.
Right.
Anticipating the re-division of that at some point in the future.
Because that's what has been happening.
Yes.
That's the one other issue you didn't deal with.
But Janelle's trying to cut in here because I can see that she's-
Well, I have a question, clarification on that, so that, that is clear for this, this parcel, if you have a large parcel you're dividing, but it also comes up, what if that parcel you're dividing already shares access with other parcels? And they can only divide this one in three, that's all they've got, but other parcels also share that access, so. So now it's not just about, well, this property can be, but it's about all the properties we're having to deal with. It's that.
Yeah, which means you end up maybe doing a half street, half street or something, and just spading properties next door, or complete the half street.
But does this require a three parcels that way, or a three process of the partition?
Yeah, this only refers to the lot being divided.
So we don't live somewhere already in town?
Yeah, I'm sitting here, I, I know exactly what you're talking about, I had such, I voted no against that one because I, I didn't like that we'd done that, the private utilities, the private road, it was just-
Well, we did need public facilities for the residential. But-
But that was a choice, I think you could choose to not do that. If you knew it was going to be extended into other properties, I'm sorry.
Well, we couldn't at the time.
Why?
Well, because it was allowed. You've read our old code.
Well, we did require them to put an easement, give a bigger easement for a future road, they didn't have to make it public, but they had to do a bigger access easement, but it held the utility, so it was a condition that was put on the partition. For other lots by the future, but we right now have like five parcels taking access off that access, because, because that was the, the concept at the time, or the understanding at the time, is that, well, you can't, well, they're going to have this piece of lot planned they're dividing, even though others take access, maybe that's not true, but that's, that was the thing.
Well, and three of those lots that weren't part of that piece, all could subdivide them.
Yeah, I was going to say we're all big enough to-
Off of that same road, they could all subdivide. Yeah, I mean-
Yeah, we can have eight or nine houses on that driveway.
That's exactly what we're trying to avoid.
Well, maybe where those circumstances exist, that it's inevitable like in a case like this, there's nothing you can do about it.
Well, but why not? To your point, why couldn't we make them do a half street?
Well, but you said that there were already other, yeah, just look at a diagram.
It's on the end fifty-four?
Three, one, oh, eight.
Three, one, oh, eight, oh, two, page forty-five.
So he had like, oh, yeah, three, it was a deep lot. It was a deep lot and had like access to-
I was going to say, can you get a darker one? Because it's hard to see from the-
Well, I thought just one was coming out better than the others. Oh, yeah, let's use that one. Alright, let's see, can I get this right? There's a lot back here.
Yep, and that's an acre.
And then there's-
And those were half, those were half acre. The two on the side were half acre, and I actually think the one in the back went all the way across, or it was something like that.
Oh, I remember.
Yeah.
Yeah, you got it. So, this property was the one that was dividing.
And there was a great system access easement.
Yeah, right here.
Right up the middle.
Right here.
For only those two, or three.
Well, all, all three of these, this was one, two-
The front one with its own driveway.
And the front one had its own driveway.
Oh, yeah, that's right, he has.
Yeah.
So they not have rights to the easement.
But he's a half acre over there in the front.
That one did, yeah.
Yeah, so-
So the one in the front could actually divide again.
That one could divide, this is got a twenty, or, ah, no, sorry, we got a wider easement here, right now they've got a driveway, and right there, this guy is taking access from, this one takes access from, and then all three of these do. And we've got a wider easement, we went through that, when you put public utilities down it, in easements, but this guy can divide, this guy can divide.
And the one, and the one in the front can.
You effectively end up with ten lots for something on this private access easement.
Yep.
Well, yeah, and I, I think the question that was challenging at the time was, this person dividing these, we could put requirements on these, and require them to dedicate more to the easement, that's great, but who pays for this money to go in? This person splits, this person splits.
That's a development by highest court.
So could you, could you require, you've already got this condition before this divides, could you require them to put in a public street that are, are taken on at the time, or what employees was knowing, because their, their property, you're only splitting for three season required. And you can't split that one any further.
That was before my time, but I think the code has minimum standards, you could have asked for a street on a three lot split, and if you had a decent argument for it, you could have had to build a public street, they're half width anyway.
That's not what happened, but, and if we go back to our current code, if we take out that access, the easement, those would have all been less than ten thousand square foot lots, if I remember right, they were like right at it, and that was part of the problem, was, well, if you make me do that, then I have to split it in the two instead of three, am I right, Janelle? And then, and then it was to the developer is, well, then I can't make, you know, I, I'm not going to make any money on this. And, and we're like, uh, well, so, see, it was a mess. It was a mess.
Are there other circumstances like that around here?
Potentially yes. Right here. Right here.
What now is sure?
Maybe it go.
Yeah, there's one down the street, right down here, you drive by it when you come to us.
Well, that's why this leans towards requiring very strict standards for any kind of partition that does this, which would be very expensive, and require very expensive streets and public utilities to be put in, but it would completely avoid this kind of problem. You would likely see those applications wouldn't even come in anymore, because they would realize very quickly, it's not financially feasible, but maybe that is okay, because it's going to help you get the streets in the end.
Right.
Make that definitely clear on what the rule is, therefore it should be penalized in people's court.
Yeah, and the way John has this written, that's exactly what it's doing.
I don't have a problem.
When, when the property that's being divided can't divide into more than three?
I see what you're saying. Because it's the neighboring properties that are creating the complication, is what you're saying. Well, again, if these are minimum standards, then we, you and I, then the fortitude of our acting body here could step up and say, these are minimums, we're allowed to ask for more if a circumstance like this comes up. And I don't think this is written in a way-
You have some criteria to drive that down.
Well, the current code does. It says you have to divide in a way that leaves access to neighboring properties or something like that.
Sure.
That would allow you to put, to request a street for a partition. I, I am not intimately familiar with a new criteria in this code, but I'm sure there's something in there that would allow for that, it'd be in section four point one one one.
So if we have a situation like this, where we know, is there any way that we can put a restriction on it, put a covenant on the partition, so that need ever comes at the city's behest, let's say that we know that these could develop, that we get right of way, and then also a agreement that if we make the determination based on the development, the street does need to go in, that these property owners have to participate?
Yeah, a waiver of remonstrance is what that would be.
That's what it did.
You did that.
Except, we did call a waiver of remonstrance on that.
But that's what it would be.
That's what-
I think because we've got so many lots on there, that way that's something we should be looking at, do.
That's what we did, but the problem I had with that-
And then we required the last one to build it, but they have a waiver.
The problem I had with that was, why are we putting it on the backs of the homeowners when really that developer should be paying for that?
Well-
But that was my, my pushback, is we put it on the backs of the homeowners in the future.
I think as a planning commission body, you certainly have the right to put in this new code that that would be the case, that the developer would have to build the streets prior to recording that, period. With full knowledge that it would drive away a lot of the people who were partitioning, but it's up to the applicant if they knew that information going forward from the beginning. And I think John's attempt here certainly starts driving towards that, because a subdivision isn't iffy on whether or not a street is needed, it says streets are needed.
Right.
And so this really makes the connection.
Well, I think if you start putting conditions on something like that, every time there's an application, then you have to negotiate.
You need to get rid of that.
No, that's true.
You know, this, this is a good start, to set the ground rules. If you set the ground rules and developer comes in and sees what he has to do, he will know then whether he can apply or not, whether he can make any money before he even starts the project.
Sure.
So it's his choice at that point.
Sure.
But if you have to negotiate every time we get an application here, you're going to end up with every decision is going to be different.
Yes.
And then you start precedences, which is not-
Sure.
We don't want to go down that road.
And we don't want to go that way.
No, I totally follow what you're saying, but I'm trying in my head to reword C, the serial partition section here, to, to capture what you guys are saying, and I can't think of a way to write that. If the neighboring properties are big enough they could divide, now you have to put a street in, that seems odd.
No, no, in fact, I, we start running into a Nolan Nolan argument, that if we require, if we required that three lot partition to put in a street, that may not even be constitutional, because it goes, it's putting too much of a requirement based on their impact.
Maybe not.
Well, you certainly do the right of the application.
Yeah, the right of the dedication to waiver of remonstrance, or what most people would do, but that does put it back on the homeowner and not the subdivider, and that's true. And they're signing something in their stack of escrow stuff that says they're aware of it, but we all know, you don't read every one of those forms you sign, and so they wouldn't really know, and the cost would be substantial, when that road went in, they'd have to pay tens of thousands, not thousands.
And how many people can do that? I just think upfront, the developer needs to, to, I mean, it says in here, when they do development, that the developer needs to pay it, and I think putting it on the backs of the homeowner five, ten, fifteen years from now, I don't think that's right. That's my opinion. I'm one, I'm one of nine.
But what if this is, what, this is one homeowner, this is not a developer. This is someone who says, I want to partition my land into little parcels, so if someone wants to build on it, and I can sell that?
Well, technically he is a developer, though.
This guy bought his land specifically to develop.
Pardon?
He, this guy bought the land specifically so he could develop, but it was not a long-term homeowner. He went and bought it, or be that motor, bought the home, it's a vacant land, and turned it into a building.
Well, I think a lot of the decision criteria that we could add to these would help get us there as well. This version that John's put together has decision criteria for subdivisions, but there's not a lot to these decision criteria, well, I would want to add it, ten.
Go on and look at C, under 3.108.03, standards for lots and parcels, and C is access, so this is part of the subdivision standards, okay?
Okay.
And it says all new lots and parcels shall provide a minimum forty feet of frontage on existing or post-reeks.
We had twenty-five from our last discussion.
Well, that's what I was talking about a little bit ago, because that really impacts cul-de-sac lots.
Yeah, I mean, I think what we did is add it to say, or twenty-five feet of cul-de-sac on a, on the, or frontage on a cul-de-sac. Because the sense is, you don't want less than a forty foot frontage for a lot that's just fronting on a straight street.
I thought the narrowest you could have was eighty?
Yeah, but you also could have, that's an average, you could have a pine-shaped lot or something.
But here's the cul-de-sac lot.
So, specify twenty-five feet for cul-de-sac.
Okay.
Is that what you're saying?
That's the best way of doing it.
Alright.
Okay, you can go on.
Okay, now going on, notice it says, here's the three reasons you could, it says residential lots and parcels may be accessed by a private street or by private access easement, if to do otherwise is infeasible, due to shape, terrain, location, parcels unnecessary to provide for future development of adjoining property, no more than ten percent of the lots in the subdivision may be accessed by a private street. So I have a question for you, and this is just devil's advocate. What would be wrong to allow this to divide and actually, you know, end up in here with a fire code, you know, the dedication, uh, minimum 26 feet plus party, whatever we do, and they have to do a turnaround, a legal turnaround at the end, cul-de-sac ever hit with, that's right, and go ahead and have, you know, uh, what's that add up to? About 10 lots on a private drive?
Who builds a private drive?
Well, but each of them contributes to it when they develop, they end up doing that. We don't, we don't allow anything 26 feet that has to be built to our current construction, even if it's private. Even if it's private, okay. So still, you can do that in this circumstance.
Just make it 34 instead of 26.
Yeah. It has to be 32.
Yeah, okay.
And it's private.
Yeah, but when.
Then there's no reason it could be public.
Yeah, definitely, you might as well make it public now.
They just don't save money with their.
And I think the real issue is, if this guy divides, when, does he build this? And then when this guy divides with just these lots, does he build this?
Yes.
The other half, or who builds what when becomes the issue.
I think I'd just ban all of it.
Well, one thing that's.
It's kind of what we're, this is in all the code, yeah.
One thing that helps with all this is the, um, connection piece that we're talking about. I know you guys haven't heard a lot about that yet, Council, but adopting connection piece for water, sewer, streets and stormwater, so, so each property pays their fair share of their frontage costs on an actual street. Now, this isn't a real street yet, right? So that's where it doesn't apply, but if a develop, if somebody were to come in and build that street to access the back one, there's also with those fees, the ability to ask for reimbursement. So that if someone comes and utilizes that, they can get reimbursed for part of those costs. So it's a tool that will help us have some of these, these things, and the developer, now they got a front of money at the beginning, but they can get reimbursed over time.
So that's one of the things we were, you know, that we were just talking about is, let's say those three lots on that hypothetical are the actual one that we would use or what we're looking at coming in. You require them to pay that three frontage fee now. It goes in, it's not set to that, but we just know if they pay it, so that at some point, if that does get developed, then the city, we receive the funds and we would be the ones paying that, at least the costs are paid upfront.
By the developer, not by the homeowner?
Yeah.
Right.
Or connection systems over there with developers.
We just have to figure out how to, it's very clear when it's an actual public road, where the road doesn't exist yet, it happens that there's some, like all these dealt with that.
I believe all these dealt with that, it's a mermas, no fault, you wouldn't develop a street by this. So I think, well, you're, you're identifying that, you know, if those streets develop, if the properties, the digital properties develop in that area, you're going to need a street. So at that point, then you would charge those.
A street lot.
Frontage fee, knowing that. That if a street does end up being required for this other development, if it never happens, well, they took that chance by not going in and working with the rest of the property at that time, but this is, you know.
Well, that fits the model as it's drafted, serial partition. If it looks like a deck, lots like a deck, it's a duck. Process it like a subdivision, which means all those tools would be available.
So we just want to make sure that with what we're adopting, Council moves forward that we have that ability to do that in this situation, even though the street's not there yet, but we know that there's a potential, and staff makes that determination that to service the rest of the properties that could be developed in that area, that are subdivisional, that they pay the street frontage fee upfront for, well, streets, water, sewer. Good with that? You're pretty tight on serial partitions.
So, so the serial partition as it's written right now, if that particular property could go bigger though, they're going to blur it in themselves, being on the opposite side.
Yeah, in that case, absolutely. I think we're covered now. Okay, and then there's, I mean, there's, there's standards in here, the flag lots, we talked about those a lot.
We had some different, uh.
Members?
Members.
Yeah, I do too.
On the flag lots.
Yeah. We all agreed at the last hearing that it was going to be 25, not 20.
Yeah.
All right.
We've already agreed on 25.
Improved surface at 12 and 14.
I have 16.
I do.
Yeah, our first draft has 16, and then this has 14 for improved surface.
For single flag lot.
Shouldn't that be 16?
Access street. I think maybe I grabbed the wrong file tonight, I'm looking at it, sorry.
Did you want to go print you a copy?
No.
I'm looking at the revision 4.05, is that what you guys are showing?
Yeah, at the bottom it says revised 4.05?
Yeah. Don't worry, I'll reconcile all these things. I'm going to have more fun than I have. Okay, but then it goes through, talks about three lots, sidewalk lines, utility easements, just make sure there's clear language on those things. These all are standard, state-of-the-art kind of standards.
Let's go, John? Go back to that improved service. Is that 14 or 16?
Oh, under D1, flag lots.
Flag lots on D1?
Well, here it's 16.
Okay.
So we're at 25 and 16.
25 and 16, yeah, okay, thank you.
Far.
Twenty feet. Yeah, it's, I'm just saying, I think it's supposed to be 20.
But if they're not far enough, the minimum.
I think it's greater than 20. How about the improved surface shall be as required by 5.0?
Yeah, if we double it now, that's okay. Oh, there.
Well, I'm thinking it ought to be 20 feet.
Instead of 16?
Instead of 16.
Okay.
Well, let's go with 20.
Because that's fire code.
All right.
And make, make it, just make it standard, 20.
Two and a half feet on each side, so usually 20 feet.
There we go.
Filling up your impervious pretty quick, isn't it? If we're accessing a single house, why are we looking for 20 feet of pavement?
Fire code.
Okay.
Doesn't have to be paved with that one.
Okay, anything else on that?
Well, John, while you were here, I had a question for you. If you fast forward to the criteria, the decision criteria for subdivisions, in the next section, it's, it only has three criteria, and they're pretty sparse at that for a subdivision. The existing code has 14 criteria for subdivisions. Was it your idea that, that these standards in here are supplementing what, what used to be in the criteria to an extent?
Because a lot of what was written in the criteria was reflecting back to just design standards. And, you know, essentially, this is going through and saying, if you're the standards, you meet the standards, then there's no reason to lay that out in the criterion and then to say it meets standards. So, and when we get to that, we can look and maybe reflect back on existing code and see if any of those.
There's a few, there's, yeah, there's a few criteria that are still in the subdivision section in the existing code that have proven to be tremendously useful in this city, and I want to make sure they were echoed in this new code for sure. Okay.
All right, development requirements then, we talk about length, width, the shape of lots, lot sizes, traffic circulation, connectivity, collector and archerial streets, pedestrian standards, those are all pretty straightforward, I hope.
Any, any, if I could give you details, was there anything in your project that involves cul-de-sacs?
Those fire code rules on cul-de-sacs?
Well, we have a, we continue to get cul-de-sacs, we have a temporary system, what do you call it, uh, budget, suggesting we move away from cul-de-sacs to revise through streets. We miss opportunities for two streets or holding those. So basically, my question is, is there something in here to lock us away from the specialty of cul-de-sacs?
If it were, it would simply say cul-de-sacs are discouraged, but even that has, it's so wishy-washy that it's almost unenforceable.
I wouldn't say that, I'd say cul-de-sacs are only allowed with, there's no.
Potential for connecting streets? Well, that's tough because even running stubs to other areas, and that's one of the criteria we used to have, was to provide connectivity with neighboring parcels, and that would result in a lot of stub streets that have been very, very useful.
Sure.
But in here, this doesn't say anything about a need to run sub-streets, which almost encourages.
Well, it does, so the city may acquire dead-end streets or stub streets where the potential exists for additional residential development on adjacent property.
We got a huge miss on between lot and decorative four, we could have had a two street, should have had a two street, pretty blatant, and it, this is another one that is, because we don't, I don't think we worked according to that.
Well, then we should, we could tighten up this requirement and instead of saying city may, we could say city shall, where there's an opportunity to run a connecting street, shall run that. And so far, I think the city's done a great job. You mentioned a couple that we've missed, but overall, I've seen lots where we did a wonderful job running stubs, stubs streets out, which have really helped in future conditions.
You're talking about before these guys, and before these guys, the, the, we literally were told we cannot look at a different piece of property connecting to the one that we are doing. And so that's how that kind of stuff happened. And I think that now, I, I see different now, where you're trying to do that.
Give back here. As we develop our strategic plan, there are linking and work with some transportation each other can push really hard to minimize cul-de-sacs to provide through tracing. Parallel on that effort almost was the state effort to create our temporary system plan. They first reverse the mission, event the amount of cul-de-sacs. The question is, are we doing anything to do that?
In this code? I don't think so.
Well, I think you did. I think D, address, D1, address it under connectivity. And with potential exists. Number one, dead-end streets where the potential exists for additional residents involved on additional property, we can require it.
Well, then let's get rid of the word may, but shall.
I agree.
To, just to strengthen it up a little bit, but that's fair. That's still a bit subjective in where the potential exists, but when you have an entire body like this helping you, it's not an issue. That's why you have a planning commission.
These are still discretionary, discretionary decisions to some degree. So the old area in the commission makes a well-considered decision.
And we have really beat some people up in the past over this specific issue and won, quite frankly.
But I think in the past, maybe there was a minor effect that if somebody loses a lot, well, we can't really do that because we don't know what happens in the future, but that's not, that's not true.
Oh, altogether, too happy to tell someone to lose a lot. That seems to be fine.
Well, we're going to ban some of them. They're on the O4, and they were on D, the connectivity, that's what they were talking about.
So are we changing may to shall, is that what?
I'd like to.
That's what I heard.
Well, we want to keep you happy, so.
There you go. Okay, then we talk about connections, uh, on archerial, electric streets, design standards for pedestrian and bicycle facilities. See that picture last week, the week before in Portland, where someone tried to drive a pickup with a camper on it over.
I saw that, it got stuck, yeah.
Yeah, his pickup was all over there, but the camper was.
Wedged in.
Wedged in the pedestrian bridge, yeah, that's right.
Spelling under F1, minimum dedicated width, you're missing a D.
Got it. Minimum dedicated width 15 feet. All right, improvement requirements. Remember, we talked about this a lot in terms of the frontage requirement and trying to anticipate the situation where you'd have a, uh, a, a partition or a house construction, do we require the frontage improvement when there's no adjacent sidewalks or frontage improvement? And the answer was, that you came up with, is if it's less than or equal to 250 feet, does not connect, the applicant will do the non-remunstrance agreement, and doesn't have to do that.
Well, even this is going to change a little bit in light of the new fees that we were just talking about.
Yeah, might.
Was there a discussion of mailboxes in that design standard stuff? I have that button down, but again.
Is that part of your design standards?
It's on my list, I have it for that section.
That's, well, I mean, that might be a little too refined to necessarily have here as opposed to the design standards.
I mean, design standards are things like, what's your street section?
Yeah, how do you do the street?
Do you mean like what gang mailboxes should look like?
Well, I just have mailboxes, question mark, is, should, should there be something about design standards? And I don't know if it's because of the pedestrian bicycle access.
Well, to a large extent, we can't require certain things on mailboxes.
No, what you can do, which you were, this requires five feet of walkway, including around mailboxes and other instructions. In other words, you got.
Absolutely.
I think, I think her note was probably on street light.
Street light, so there was a concern from, it's us earlier, the mailbox spots located near street lights, vice versa, and how was that coordination taking place?
That'd be tough to coordinate.
It's badly coordinated on the engineering conference.
Sure.
Decided, but where does it say that you need to do that? Is that a design standard?
That's not a land use thing, really, I wouldn't think.
I think with that in our.
The design standard is hybrid, that shouldn't be.
Yeah, that's an engineering standards concern, not.
Where do you put it?
So then we got it.
But we want lights around it, and we.
It will go in the design.
We want more room on it if there's a bike lane.
The other problem is that the developers don't dictate where the mailboxes go.
Sure, sure, that, that is a big problem.
Therefore, you know, you got your light again, so forth, so there are lights.
Traditionally, it's always been very difficult to get those, pardon, the post office to talk to anybody about mailbox placement. Very difficult.
So Janelle, did you say that, that there's a mutual talk about it, usually with the post office?
Well, it's something we, we want to see on the designer actually submit, and I look for it, how close are you building your mailbox spot into the light pole? And the last couple ones, the developer actually has hired, he told me he hired somebody to do this coordination with him, with the mail, with the post office. Now, that's to make sure that they, according to the post office, have said light pole, but I, I think it's a detail that we can try to address the best we can through the engineering design drawings. Can, we may not get it at a perfect different time because the post office is what it is, but.
Yeah, we have very little control on where mailboxes go.
Yeah, I understand that.
Should take a picture, one that the mail is entered, a light sliding term out, I just with the mailboxes. It's been a great football, just down the gap.
Well, but I think if the designers have an idea, understanding of what the post office is looking for as far as, and they're starting, somebody's talked about, and they talked about, then they can show it on the drawings in a place close to light pole, and you know, you can't control it if the post office, gee, if they mind that here, but.
I'm seeing something that needs to change in 3.108.06, and that is, these improvement requirements really have too much detail, and instead it should refer to public works design standards. So I'm going to make that in it without objection. Whatever, Janelle, what else, Janelle?
Just type that in there.
Yeah.
And highlight it.
And highlight it.
They're going on the sidewalk standards, I think, defined, streetlights, street signs, other requirements. Well, I had a question. Is there a street naming standard that the city has and uses?
There's a recommendation, I think in the code or so, there's regarding naming of streets. I think our municipal code, it lists something in there about naming of streets. I ran across the other map.
Didn't the fire department have to approve the street naming?
911 thing, we use them to make sure they're not.
Can't agree with it, right?
Yeah, normally they're proposed by the developer.
And sheriffs.
Yeah.
I don't deserve to say anything. I think it's something like you should match streets somewhere else that could be confusing, and I don't.
I don't know. I, I know there's mention of it in there, but I just, I don't know if I even read what it says.
Okay. What I'd like to do is just include a reference, say, "street name shall be in accordance with the city's adopted street naming policy." Toward the nail of the city name.
I'll say you have a council meeting tomorrow, handle that.
Oh, yeah, just move on. I'll see if I see any.
Reason why to raise it here is this is the standard that includes, the plating is part of this, which is where the street names are established. And so even though it's in the design standard, but some of the part of code, I just want to cross-reference it to make sure someone reading this knows that there are some standards for naming.
I don't have the code online. Do you have the code?
It's sort of.
I don't have mine.
Okay.
You talk about the final plaque recording requirement somewhere else, don't you?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Got it.
All right, improvement procedures.
We added a few things.
Hey, John, before you go to that.
Yeah, there's only one on pair.
3.108.06, sub 2, A2. I'm not sure what section, 16.68, 04, that's a street somewhere, colored somewhere else.
I know which city that comes from.
Which one?
From Sherwood. That's Sherwood's nomenclature.
Oh, that is. Hey, you know.
Those are the street standards for sure. You know, you've been doing this too long.
Yeah, when you.
No shame in that. Sherwood's got a good code.
Do we have, I don't remember, we have our language that says currently that all cities, public streets have to be constructed in cities.
Public streets, yeah. Yeah, and we have that for sewer, water, storm, and urban streets.
One more before you get to improvement procedures. On 10B, it says street tree planting is not required. If the developer, didn't we decide we wanted street trees?
Top of page 51.
We're on 3108.06, 10B, street tree planting. I was under the impression we did want a tree either in the, in the strip or in the yard. Yes, no, maybe?
I don't have any notes in there.
We wanted to encourage that.
We wanted trees, trees.
Yeah, we want to encourage it, but then we're going to have to.
It says not required. That sounds like we're discouraging it.
The current code, I think, says you either have to plant a street tree, so we have 3.10. I'm not sure that that's going to happen. That's just what it said. If we require it, which, I think that's a policy that is, though, what we say under sidewalks, it says improvement may be deferred and required. You see, it's not like you can do that for street trees.
Unless they rip them up during the construction process?
Yes.
And shouldn't we have some, some standard as to what the tree is?
Yes.
But that would be.
What we do, it says according to the city requirements and a species compatible.
Which we're just going to not have on the city.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, you've got a list of.
So what if it said, "tree planting is required of the developer, and it's one tree per frontage, either as a street tree or in the yard."
I'm happy with that. I just don't want a bear in the neighborhood.
I agree.
And they're not even mentioned when it's supposed to be planted.
Well.
Well, if it's required of the developer.
It needs to be on the home builder.
Well, this.
Prior to occupancy, not for the developer.
You could add in the words prior to occupancy, probably.
It's, the same words as the sidewalk. I think it's just fine. It's a primitive, it's a prior occupancy. Doesn't that just get added to our.
That's fine, as long as we get it at some point.
Unless we are going for a uniform look, because we won't get it if we have both options.
Jake, you have a code just back here somewhere?
The new one or the old one?
Old one.
I would just like to see trees myself. I don't, I just don't want them there in.
Or concrete.
Yeah, unless anyone knows.
A lot of cities have a provision like this, they require two trees.
Well, when we're 80 feet wide, that probably isn't the end of the world to have two trees, except for our 65-foot wide driveways. I guess we could plant them in the middle of the driveway, couldn't we?
Yes.
Just go around then.
Somebody's planted on the.
You got the white driveway and two trees.
Well, the entire.
I know you do. I thought you had three, actually.
You put in a planer.
Nothing but concrete, one giant driveway.
Portable trees with our portable.
There's others speak for the developer to plant the trees. Typically, they're done with the, you're in the landscape, one with the water.
Yeah.
What kind of building.
You don't want the developer.
Yeah, it's just something you're trying to do for lots of people.
You don't want to plant the sidewalks going in.
Yeah.
I put two trees are required, sort of one.
You know, they won't put one in the front with the camper.
Yep.
One in the yard, one in the.
Just two are required.
Yeah.
One of those has to be at least in the front.
Are we saying that, that one has to be planted?
I would think you'd want.
As long as it's a correct tree.
Well, we'll definitely make sure of that.
I only got seven trees, so.
There were questions, but it is a good trip, is there a code on how wide that has to be?
It's part of the street.
We have standards to see how many are supposed to be.
I'm asking you a question because it seems to be a particular resource that's written there on the. And as a result, we go trees out.
There's, the width does vary based on the street section. I have to pull those out from the education system. There is some variability in there, and that all, the street tree was from Albany gives you different options for different lengths of plantations. But I don't think they know who's below four feet.
So that's a fix, it's a provision. My point was going to do that you may have a tree that was nearby. But at four feet to.
But four feet's not big enough to put a tree in. Four feet's not big enough to put a tree in. You're going to have it out in the street. It needs to, I mean, shrubs maybe.
To me, either or is fine, as long as we get some trees in the neighborhood.
I think on granite, there's trees in the strip.
You have a strip, you need to have a.
We have, we have some houses that just went in on cul-de-sacs here that don't have it in the strip. It's curved and sidewalk.
I don't think we have a single street standard that allows curve-adjacent sidewalks.
Well, they exist.
We do?
And cul-de-sacs, right opposite the park, whatever that street is.
Well, if you pick the proper trees, in a few years, they're tall enough, you can park under them, unless you drive a UPS truck.
Or a garbage truck.
Or a garbage truck.
And you just, you do the trimming for the owner.
Well, you put your garbage can out a little farther.
14 feet of grade is the norm for that.
In what world?
Yeah, okay. I know I got a notice last year from the city about that, that very thing. And they gave that out and inspected after I screwed up the 14 feet. Obviously, it's all going to play. And my garbage is back in the alley. It's not on the street.
We don't serve.
It's the bus driver, is it? Yeah, it's the bus driver.
The problem is the way it's made or it's somehow you have to curb it, actually, it's six inches.
You find it?
It says that rename.
City on the trees in the yards. Here, this may not be why.
It may end up being three and a half because the major is from the face of her.
Lower commanders. And the street naming policy is what?
If you're renaming a street.
Renaming.
Renaming, not naming, but renaming a street, there's a policy in there.
What, what kind of policy does that have?
A lot of cities have policies talking about kinds of names, what they like honor. I mean, like in Cascade Lost, they're all supposed to be either Native American or referencing spirit or names, literally, that's it. Some cities have those, so they're alphabetical, they have a good pattern, or numerical, and they just have the policies for that. You know? Whatever you want. I just wondered if it was, why they ought to reference it.
This just talks about renaming a street.
I'd say if we don't need it, we don't.
Here, it's just all developer-driven. It's whatever's on the map.
Whatever they give us.
It's been, some have been changed.
We've changed some, yeah.
County or something.
Can we express displeasure if we don't like the street name when the developer comes in?
Sure. Doesn't mean you can require them to change it.
Yeah. So what is the renaming policy?
Renaming is, it said that if you're going to rename it in terms of for the planning commission, then the planning commission can make a recommendation to the council.
That's not unusual. A lot of people want to, you know, they had their great, great grandfather, the front of World War II just died, and they come in and want to have a street named after him. And there's a policy and procedure to go through that. Usually have to say why that person was significant or historically applicable to the area, or. There's some criteria usually in there. They have to be significant somehow. But that's not uncommon in many cities.
Unlike when they're named in the first place after kids and dogs.
Right, right, where it has no relevance to anything.
Yeah.
It's all Spruce Street. There's 18 different Spruce Streets, which is what GIS told us when we had one of our maps come through here. They called us and said, "Guys, there's like 20 of these Riverside Drives. You can't call it that."
Someone, it's by default, right? Somebody lived there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Under 3.108.07 improvement procedures, I want to narrow that down, make a lot more reference to the public works' design standards. I think it's got a little too much stuff in it.
Well, in our first draft, you only had one pair draft, and now we have five.
Yeah, so I want to fix that. Seriously, maybe I'm looking at a.
You want to go back down to the original?
No, I'm going to keep taking my notes here, but I will reconcile if I find that in the file. I'll reconcile it. All right, so we're looking at 3.109 yard and lot standards. Again, we, we have gone through all of this once before. You want to have anything that jumps out at you?
What did we mean when we said at our first discussion, no setback required? I have it in, I have it by front yard projections.
For the front yard projection?
It's in between.
We're just talking about that today.
I mean, I, it's just been too long. I just don't even remember why I said that.
Yeah. This does allow those architectural features to extend to the property line of the front yard 10 feet.
We just had somebody ask about that today on the phone. They want to put a porch in front of their house. You're dealing with the same question.
That makes sense.
Okay. I don't know what specific answer to your question. I don't know what would be. Envision clearance, this is very much a state-of-the-art kind of standard for protecting vision clearance in corners, both street-street and street-driveway.
Now, we weren't very specific when we talked about measurement, A1. A certain number of feet.
Well, it talks about that then down in, like in B, for a street-driveway intersection, it's 10 feet, 20 feet. Street alley, it has that, and then it has, where there's street-street connections that cover these things.
Got it.
Yes.
Can we put a digger in here? We have on the old.
Oh, absolutely.
To be able to table with like A and B.
Yes, this is definitely a place where a drawing is critical. Anything else in that one?
Did you add it? Oh, wait. Never mind.
I just have a quick question. The prohibited development, 36 inches in height from the top of the curb, so that's about 42 inches from the roadway. Is that a standard height?
Uh huh.
Thank you.
Well, the reference there is when you're sitting in the car, you can still see over it generally at that height.
Ish.
Ish.
Some of the smaller cars, I was just thinking, when you have the six-inch curb height to that 36, it's, it's now 42, and you may not. But that's okay. I was just wondering if that was a standard.
Driving one of those really low sports cars myself occasionally, I know that that's an issue. So I have to stand up and look around the corner. We talked about special uses, applicability of these standards, and then here's a whole bunch of special uses. Starting out manufactured dwelling parks. Went through these before. Anybody have any lingering points on these? Then we got the design standards for homes on individual lots.
I have a question on the manufactured home general standards, just to begin. It says it has to be multi-sectional, so it can't be a single wide?
But I thought class B was single wide. Were you allowed class B?
Well, that's in a, in a park.
This is manufactured dwelling park.
Oh, no, the one I was reading, manufactured individual.
Yeah, it says, in the next one, the design standards for homes on individual lots, 3.20, 3.02, general standards for manufactured homes. These are manufactured homes that are allowed on single lots. They're outside of a park. And in this case, they have to be multi-sectional, have at least 1,000 square feet.
So did we skip over the dwelling park then?
I don't know what any comments.
No, but that says.
Okay, well, I actually have some stuff written down.
Okay, what do you have on manufactured dwelling parks?
On H, I had a question mark, and Y, I didn't, but I did.
Well, we had discussed that last time and said that it should be the first 100 feet. But that just keeps us consistent with state requirements. We all have that altogether too well memorized at this point.
H, O1H, streets.
And then the next one down, perimeter setbacks, you said. And then the next one down, perimeter setbacks, you say the exterior park boundaries shall be 20 feet. And I guess I have written down that we were going to say 20 feet minimum. In case that we wanted to impose more there, I thought we had the right to ask for...
Not maybe.
Um, yeah, it says it in, in title, in the chapter 10, that you can do that for the state. I have that at home when I read it, it said you can, you can have additional setbacks, so...
Yeah, probably ought to say a minimum of 20 feet anyway, because the way this is worded, it says it shall be 20 feet, which means you're going to cite that 20 feet.
Yeah, yeah, it was.
Yeah, it can't be more flexible than that.
Yeah, it seemed like chapter 10 said we couldn't be more restrictive than a single-family residence, so if we have a 25-foot setback on a single-family residence rear, we could be able to force that on there.
Yeah, but this is a manufactured housing park.
That's what I'm talking about.
So we're not really regulating the homes, we're really regulating the nature of the park, and what law basically says is you have to treat a manufactured dwelling on a single lot just like a stick-built house. But we, but there's reasonable design standards that can be applied to that.
Okay.
Which means, yes, you're not going to set a higher setback for manufactured homes.
It, it doesn't matter anyway, what I was talking about was state law, and that's going to overrule us anyway.
Okay, so...
Before you go on, John, right now we have a, we say permitted housing, Class A or B manufactured permitted. But what we have in our current code is the type to be installed, Class A or B, or both, in a planning commission decision.
That was the last part of that, Kevin?
Yeah. Well, that's consistent with chapter 10, chapter 10 gives the planning commission the ability to choose A or B.
To choose A or B or both. And so I think we would probably want that.
To retain that?
Yes. It gives some flexibility, you know?
Sure, sure.
But it also says 10 years or older.
No, 10 or younger.
Newer, sorry. And that's not here either.
Well, tell John you want it added, he's more than happy to put it in there.
Well, actually, what I want is new, but I'm not going to get that, and I get it.
So what is the permitted housing going to say now, Mr. John?
Class A or B manufactured dwellings are permitted in all manufactured dwelling parks, subject to planning commission approval of the specific type or class.
Sure.
And if you want to put that language in with the age of the home, we can put something in, must be 10 years or newer.
And this is for manufactured housing parks.
Correct.
And we can have a conversation offline about some of these other standards here in this manufactured parks, which might not work. Or if they are going to stay here, they need to be refined to be very clear and objective. Each one, each standard should begin by saying, this is current objective because, and then, explain how.
The 10-year thing. That's a time of original placement, yes.
Correct, that's the only time you can regulate it.
Exactly, that's my point.
Which I don't like.
Standards for houses on single lots, individual lots.
I have one more. Back on perimeter property screening, in chapter 10 of the code, of the Oregon code, it says we can ask for additional screening. So it says here a minimum of a six-foot wood fence, but we can ask for additional screening also. And that's not here. I don't know how we would word it.
Well, it says the following minimum standard shall apply. Would you like to have Lane LeWeach, that would more specifically say the planning commission...
Could impose.
Could impose stricter standards for the warranty.
Well, we can't do that, because whatever standard we impart on these guys is going to have to be stated here in an unbelievably binary, A and B, yes you met it or no you didn't, clear and objective, period. Where anytime we get discretionary, that's where we get into hot water with chapter 10, and not necessarily chapter 10, that's where we're getting hot water with a different section of state code that says all standards for manufactured home parks have to be clear and objective. So we can't put anything discretionary in there, but you're allowed to make this one section here six pages long if you want, and be unbelievably clear and objective with lots of requirements, as long as they're all clear and objective.
So they know that if it's met, it's checked off.
Yeah.
Exactly the...
A guy at the front counter could do it, zero ability to interpret anything.
What it takes to jump over this hurdle, and then just very...
I printed out chapter 10, I should have brought it with me, and I didn't, but it was pretty much, we had the right to impose additional screening.
True, but we're not, our, our issues with chapter 10, our issue is a completely separate set of state codes that is fairly recent, that has come out and said that all cities can only apply clear and objective standards to single-family homes and manufactured home parks. And manufactured homes on an individual lot, by the way, is the same thing. And any rules that we put on those have to be unbelievably crystal clear, I can give you a great example, with accessory dwelling units. We can't say an accessory dwelling unit has to match architecturally the primary house. Not allowed to say that, because it's too subjective. Because when does it architecturally match, somebody then has to weigh in and say, well, this one does and that one doesn't, if there's any room for discretion, can't do it. So if you put a standard in here, that said perimeter screening shall be six feet high, can't use it, because that's subjective, six feet high from what? Six feet high from the grade? Six feet high from the top of a berm? You have to be very, very clear and specific on these, or they get tossed out.
How about six feet above the highest level surrounding?
Well, what's the surround, well...
What's surrounding?
That's in the standards, though.
Okay.
I mean, you...
What I mean, the screening ones? Well, there's screening standards in here.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at, but we have, we have, already have a reference on how you measure that size.
Sure, I was just throwing out that you have to be super duper duper clear, and we can't put any wiggle room in here for additional discretion, but you're allowed to throw everything in the kitchen sink in there at this stage. I encourage you to, absolutely go for it. But later on, we'll, we won't have any flexibility. You can always change the code later on, of course, but I mean, on a project-by-project basis, we couldn't then apply any discretion. And I know Dennis was asking about this when it comes to accessory dwelling units, and there are some very specific standards you can add to that, same thing with multifamily. Kevin wanted to add some really great multifamily standards, fantastic, but we've got to be very, very clear and very verbose, and add lots and lots of detail in what exactly it is you're looking for. And it has to be A and B, either it is or it isn't.
So it can't happen, and it cannot be, though, so restrictive that it's going to be cost prohibitive for projects to go forward.
That's true too, that's true too.
Okay, so you can't say it needs to be a 50-foot gold, solid gold wall.
Right.
You could say it's a 10-foot solid wall made out of, you know, and where are you measuring it from?
Right.
Measure 10 feet on either side of that wall. So if it's very clear and subjective, I mean, clear and objective, you're very good.
Do you have any of that verbiage you can pull out of your pocket or not?
Yeah, there's a lot of standards for that. The whole purpose of the legislation is just to make it easier to build housing without driving costs up. Utilities. Everyone's got their own design. Then it gets into standards for homes on individual lots, oh wait, no, we went through that, never mind. Historical sites, all kinds of stuff. Sites and the things that have to be included.
John, where are you? I'm not following you.
I'm not either. Do you understand the site?
You want to be site built.
So you're, you're making, yeah, you're on 2, 203.3.
Okay, got it, got it, got it, got it.
Yeah, we've looked at 3.2.
3.2, okay, that's where I'm at.
You lost me.
Pick up the...
Do you have any additional comments on this?
Bottom page 60, bottom page 60.
Okay.
So I have a question on the garage, which is I. So it doesn't say whether it's a two-car garage, or a one-car garage, or it just says garage.
Right.
So we're just not going, we don't care about that, because on regular houses...
I thought we talked about two cars.
On regular houses, we are, I think, saying we have to have a two-car garage, so I don't know why these wouldn't be the same.
It is now.
Tough sell.
Didn't we talk about a two-car garage?
Yeah.
Yeah, I wouldn't even argue, of like material and color is going to get us into hot water, though, eventually.
Yeah, well, I know it says that about accessory dwelling units in state law, I don't think it is.
Fair enough, fair enough.
So we'll just...
Yeah, that is housing, yeah.
That's been on the books in Corvallis for a while, and I haven't knocked it down yet, and I don't mind waiting to see how long it takes before it gets knocked down.
John and I have seen it get knocked down in other cities.
Yeah, okay, we'll see, see how it plays out. We're talking about home occupations. 3.204, does somebody else want to comment?
Conny?
Are you, 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 three?
What did we agree on?
3.204, if I should send you standard...
What's on the number?
Two.
Two?
Yes, yep, it took me.
If I was a 2.23.
You should say what?
Design standards for western homes.
Okay.
And action notes?
Got it. All right, home occupation. We talked through this quite a bit before.
So I have a question, and I don't know that it pertains to this, but in here somewhere, and now I couldn't put my finger on it if I wanted to. We said we wouldn't allow farm stands. That's a home occupation. People that want to sell their pumpkins, or they want to, you know. I'm thinking that's a home occupation.
I think we did exactly in the zone that allows farming. Am I right? I wonder if it's in, in chapter 2. I mean, article 2. And the general industrial zone, we have farm. Farm uses are allowed in the...
Business or...
Yeah, or green areas.
Page 11-9.
Of which...
2, 2.103. Home occupation, subject to chapter 3.1.
103.
I remember a productivity farm.
There was something in here that said...
It wasn't specifically farm stands, they couldn't sell anything off their property.
They couldn't, right.
The pumpkin lady can't sell pumpkins, they can't sell cattle, they can't...
Well, I like that rule.
Yeah.
Yeah, and our fellow that his wife sells eggs and he sells beef is not here today, Ryan.
3.2104, we're not there yet, but right, uh, general standards, there's crops, workers and gardeners, starting with crops, working products, vegetables, some like food ads. First one, should be permitted, provided no produce or similar products are sold.
Where is that at, Janelle?
We're coming up there, we're up there.
Okay.
677, last time. 3202, 3212, 04.
It does say services or sales conducted on a farm, it's a home occupation, shall be by appointment only.
So you have general standards, you have the sign.
That seems appropriate to me.
Yeah, that's like, you have a teacher selling shoes.
Yeah, taxes, the guy who does taxes, yeah.
Yeah, but we haven't identified Conny's question about the truck.
We're not, we're not there yet.
Yeah, it's where I get the chapters back.
What?
Okay.
It's, it's 3.212.
Okay, any other comments on home occupation?
Yeah, the large vehicle storage, vehicle over one-ton capacity, what happens when you have a tow truck driver that lives next door to a warehouse and running a tow truck, it's out of there.
He's got to put it in the garage.
You got to park it somewhere else.
Yeah, he's got to park it somewhere else, or in the garage.
With over a one-ton capacity, using a judge for a modification.
It's funny you mention this, this specific line, because we had a gal at the counter last week who was trying to argue to lessen that, she said, get rid of the one-ton restriction thing, if you have a car for your business, you shouldn't have it. Because she's got a neighbor that does this and drives her bonkers.
I would say if it's a tow truck driver, it's not a home occupation most likely.
Right.
Some people run it out of their house.
Well, if he's got a phone in it.
He's got a phone in the truck.
Gross, he had a weight rating of over 10,000 pounds.
I don't think it's unreasonable to require him to put it in the garage then.
Well, you have to do a trip out to the front of the truck.
Well...
Or behind the fence.
You don't know that, and on a lot out here, a lot, one acre, and he's got a giant workshop behind the house, you can pull in front of that. But I think the idea is that a vehicle that size could potentially be offensive to your neighbors, and so it shouldn't be in front of the house. So in that case, you would just tell him, no. End of story, park it somewhere else.
What do you say?
Well, if they're legally parked on the street.
So, so I know in our neighborhood, I know, there is an owner, owns, Bob, one of the owners, Bob's owner, has, you know, he doesn't run the business, the business has a separate address and stuff. But he has, a lot of times, he'll have, well, they're flatbeds, or in some cases, one of their cylinders, that he's covering over the weekend, parked in front of his house. So, it's not, I don't think it would be, I don't know if you consider it, you know, if they, depend where their business addresses, I'm not sure that would necessarily come in to be in a home occupation. Yeah, exactly, well, I'm just trying to, yeah. You'd have to find out, okay, is your ad, are you using your address as your business address, in that case, then, no, they could park it.
But if he's operating his business out of his residence...
That's what I'm saying, you show him his business.
If he's answering the call from work and getting in that vehicle and taking off and going to work, he's operating the business from that house.
Sure.
He is, absolutely, I've had to pay business licenses for that very reason, for 30 years.
But if he's not, if it's not, let's say it's a driver driving to someone, that's not a home occupation. Yeah. And if the business has a, a business address, it's not that house, you know, that's not where their business, registered business name is, I don't know how you could say it would be a home occupation.
Well, I wouldn't call it a home occupation, but he's certainly operating the business from the home, and I guess when we don't...
The driver's not, maybe it's just a driver took his truck home.
Well, the only thing you want to protect the neighbors from is you want to protect them from, if you woke up all hours of the night, in the case of a tow truck operator. Well, you have, let's say your neighbor's driving for you, he tells you, I don't think that you could say that's a home occupation.
No, it's not.
I agree.
Well, then I guess we just have to ban commercial vehicles from parking in residential streets.
That's an answer, and that'd be a municipal code to...
Right, that wouldn't be land use anymore. Very true.
Now, if someone has a tow business and they're operating another house, then I think that's...
No question.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else on home occupations? Anything on home trailer, vehicular sales and service?
Standard, anything?
Yeah.
Do you have any here?
Yeah.
All parking areas, building areas. Or areas used for storage of manufactured homes, have to be kept after your household.
Wow.
We got a manufactured home.
Wow.
Manufacturer areas, their parking areas, or storage areas on games.
And in many ways, that's probably a good thing, especially for service-oriented.
I don't think we want 42 acres paved. I don't think we want 42 acres paved.
Phil, Janelle, I'll tell you real quickly that that ground is a perk no matter what anyway.
Probably.
She says it's impervious one way or the other.
I believe in my voice, but, but I don't really, in certain, in those circumstances, we have, or I don't see a reason to pave these big areas where they're storing gravel when they're away from the roads.
Actually, if anything, it increases your heat island effect, for sure.
Gravel's better. It's not as good as grass.
Would we want to have all parking areas associated with loading or areas used for the sale? That's what's up with the, that would be paid for the concrete. That's where you want, you don't want someone having to have a sale time. Gravel lines.
Well, we did the same thing kind of in the industrial zone, didn't we? Where the front part of it had to be paved and the back part didn't have to be.
Yeah, but I think you got sales going on, I think you want all of it to be paved versus the store.
Or you can just have it say this, and say, allow alternative surfaces to a conditional use permit process.
I think that's the same thing.
Because that makes it was, they would do it just at the same time the company recycling design reviews to concurrent conditional use, just so that it be on the surface that you would consider that.
As long as one of the conditional use criteria said that you have to minimize impacts to neighbors, because then they would have something to review it again. And say dust here, since you have all industrial neighbors, wouldn't be a big deal, but dust here, if you have homes next to it, that's a big deal, you gotta pave it.
And the same with dogs associated with-
Sure, sure, yeah.
What do you think of that, would you say alternative surfaces-
Need a CUP.
Can be considered by the condition use process?
What's the enforcement mechanism, though, on existing, non-compliant now? Probably nothing.
Legal non-conforming, the minute this passes, they couldn't expand.
Right, right, but we have no enforcement mechanism to-
Sure.
Tell you to comply, okay, I just wanted to make sure of that.
Did you want these screened, if they could be seen from I-5? It's in the screening section, it says a lot shall be screened from adjoining residentially zone properties. We, the reason I asked, because we talked a little bit about the visual appearance of our city from I-5, and now I'm reading this.
So you put up an eight-foot fence, and I imagine you can still see what's back there.
Well, I was thinking vegetative screening would eventually grow to the point where it wouldn't have the appearance. I'm just throwing it out there, the commission, if you thought it was, if you cared what the city looked like from I-5.
Well, that doesn't count, you just-
Well, I didn't, I'm not trying to make it sound like if I did.
Let me give you an example, Wilsonville Toyota. Drive, you know, through Wilsonville I-5, and you cannot see the dealership, because it's, it is blocked from I-5 view. On purpose, visual screening by a wall, which is Wilsonville code. There's a sign, and that's the only way you know.
How'd Subaru get it?
So how did Subaru?
They just finished Subaru, how'd they get it?
Same owner.
It's, actually, they just sold too. No, also, Wilsonville has a provision that there's showing no outside storage or display of-
That's why it's on.
Vehicles.
Yeah.
That's why most of it's inside, and it's the same where World's The Museum is, that was the Dodge dealer, and that was all indoor. I mean, it, it's not fully that way, but to a great extent, Wilsonville really regulates that visual thing that you're talking about.
Chevy store.
Yeah, mostly inside.
Well, I was really not thinking retail when I brought this up, I was more thinking just storage facilities. Pay to store your RV kind of thing, did you want that?
Yeah, but we're mainly industrial, and we're proud of that.
Can you answer the question?
And I certainly don't-
No need for I-5 screening.
I certainly don't think we're gonna fence off the transload station.
Yeah. That'd be a big thing.
But I do care what Old Salem looks like, I don't care so much what-
Yeah, but he's talking about I-5.
Well, it's not what this says.
No, he, he mentioned it out, him out loud, the old Salem.
I don't really care about I-5, but I do care about Old Salem. And that's one thing we haven't done a very good job of, is screening, screening on Old Salem. So, I don't know if that pertains, but it's-
We have to have a brush about that. Do you have a gold cap, and I know that you look at regarding duplication of life of Old Salem? Do you see that evolving into the Texas code case?
Well, that's what we mentioned last.
Funny you mention that, we've got, a lot of the conversation we're gonna have about the zoning ties very specifically into that. And I don't wanna jump ahead, but, but a lot of the zones we've chosen, front, all sides of Old Salem, were specifically chosen for that reason. To address the visual appearance of Old Salem, so we'll get to that. Wouldn't necessarily be part of the screening section, but the uses themselves become somewhat of a, you know, visual, I don't know, you address them visually to the zone.
So they will have in the zone.
They are made out of powder and dough, like a dough, or something.
No, because the uses of the zones themselves will end addressing what Old Salem looks like. So outside storage?
Away from the storage.
All right, we'll tell you all about that, well, we'll tell you about that at the next hearing, cause I don't think we're gonna get to it this time.
Okay, we good with that?
Good.
Residential accessory structures, next section.
For some reason, I have A2 crossed out.
Oh, because one and two are relatively the same thing.
Yep.
Game of Thrones is materials.
Yeah. So I have a question on this little chart.
Yep.
And so you say, side and rear yard, 50% of yard, rear yard only, 35% of yard. So what's the definition of a side yard?
Side yard is the space between the front of the building and the back of the building.
Okay, is that defined anywhere? Because to me, when I hear side yard, I'm gonna hear people say, it's that whole side. So then that's more square footage, and then they can have a bigger building.
The definition is pretty clear, that anything in front of the building line of the house is front yard.
Okay.
Anything behind the building line of the house is rear yard.
Okay.
And that, which is in between is side.
Okay, I'm good as long as we're defined, but I was thinking that was subjective, so.
Yeah, and this is where we came up with these ideas on, on sliding scale, basically.
Right.
For any, allowing big accessory structures.
So our side yard definition is a yard that is not a front yard or a rear yard?
There you go. Yeah.
What if you have a circular house? Set in a circular lot?
A corner lot, it's totally different.
Okay, anything else on accessory structure?
I have on setbacks, for some reason I have written something about plus one foot if it was over eight feet. I don't know what that means.
We have that plus one foot of a 15 feet, didn't we also have the eight feet? Anyone else?
No. In the old one, we had, no, five-foot setback. I mean, in the first draft.
Yeah, then we added this, the building's higher.
So, John, this confused me, this table, so if, it says if it's over 600 square feet, then you can only have it the rear yard. And then it's 35% of that rear yard.
Yep.
But is the rear yard 20 feet in from the property line, from the back property line?
Yeah, does it include the easements?
No.
For the setbacks.
So if I have a one-acre lot-
The yard is not setbacks.
Okay.
Yeah, so if you have a one-acre lot, the house is up front, your backyard might be 200 feet deep. And so, this is, your accessory structure cannot provide no more than 35% of that yard.
Okay, all right.
Including easements?
Yes, you can't build over easements.
Right.
Easements are part of the square footage.
Okay.
So, I don't know if we need to say this here, but I would want to, this 50% of yard, 35% of yard, still falls within the overall impervious area of the lot, the maximum 50%. So, if they're maxed out on their impervious area elsewhere, they can't cover.
Oh, sure, you're saying this counts towards building coverage, building lot coverage, oh, sure.
Total lot coverage.
Total lot coverage.
Okay.
Yeah, that could be a footnote to that table. Just to clarify.
At the risk of ticking everybody off, to go back to my old question, about sheds that are, runners, drawn in, lay down, even building, that are portable, movable, that are up against fences all over our town. Why do we care? And the ways of setbacks are important?
Well, against fences, I would have, it'd be, at least be against the same ones. I'm sorry.
No, they're backyard, all over our town, up against fences.
Right up against the fence, well, isn't that the reason we should be concerned? Because the adjoining neighbor may not want them right up against the fence.
They're typically cornered with neighbors, neighbor has one every side of it. I'm not joking, I'm right with you.
My question is, in that, on foundations, they're movable, take some effort, but why do we care?
Why is a five-foot setback so important?
Well, you're putting in the movable portion of it, if that's the case, can we build a permanent structure there? Because these movable sheds are no longer movable, once they're clogged down there and loaded up. I mean, short of getting a forklift in, and you can't turn the fence down anymore.
So, one, one reasons where it could, especially on a side yard, you have five feet, and you're right in the edge of your fence, you now would put combustible, a structure, combustible structure. Now, you no longer have the design that you wanted to have, the tend to be separation between structures. So, you've got, you've got, if it's wooden fence, you've got a cap swing now, and then you get twisted down, back to back, now you have not only one, but potentially two sheds. Someone takes their, let's see, sort of rags and put them in the shed, it catches fire at the middle of the night.
Next to the gas mower?
What's that?
Next to the gasoline mower?
And it's their gas.
All right, I'm not that person, I just, if you haven't got one. My street feed up, but my neighbors is right on it, and they're all over town right on it.
But what you're saying, though, is if it was somewhat mobile at some time, disregard the setback code, here in the city.
I can go and jack on it, but five on our roll dollar.
How big is it?
Uh, maybe eight foot.
Okay, here's the deal, this generally applies to structures that lack a corrigibility permit, and that's 80 square feet.
Say that again?
That's 80 square feet.
If that's the case, this is non-issue. If this specifically requires a building permit, should-
Hell, no, it doesn't.
That would mean-
It's one shit, I don't know, it's one-
Not a structure, it doesn't need a building permit.
Structure.
I've used that in many cities to get around things.
If I had a spread buyer-
It's not a structure, if it doesn't need a building permit, you can put it wherever you want. And part of that idea is that it's movable.
Right.
If, if this planning commission would agree to that and staff, then I have a non-issue, as do many, many, many people in our community.
I don't know how we would enforce it if it doesn't require a building permit.
That's right, we never know it. Complaint driven.
If you need a building, you have to come over two hard teeth.
And if you need a building permit, you have to comply with setbacks at that point.
Yeah.
Yeah, but if you don't need a building permit, we don't see it.
There you go.
So then you can let it go, right?
Why, I think that's a good answer, because if that is, it's fact of the matter. I just walk around the aggregate of how many one year per year this is.
Sadly, the same answer goes for, how many sheds can I have in my backyard if they're all under 200 square feet? I give the answer through gritted teeth, we don't know, we don't see it, we don't care, it becomes a lock coverage issue, but even then, without permits, we would never know about it. I hate giving that answer, cause there's people out there that'll put 10 sheds on their property.
Although, although what you do here, but if, I'm curious, if you pick that decision, does this require, apply to only those sheds, the buildings that require permit or not? You might wanna clarify, what am I doing? And I'll, although what you do, if I, I think, there's nothing to it here.
I mean, even the handout that we have on accessory structures today says that same thing, there's an asterisk there that says, if you're under 200 square feet, you're not even an accessory structure, so don't worry about it.
So 10 by 20?
It's 200 square feet.
200, so a 199 would not need it.
Correct.
And it could be right up against the fence.
Should be 200 and above. Who's gonna build, who's gonna build 199 and above?
But, okay, pardon me?
Should be 200 and above, yeah.
Okay, but 200 and above, so that's what I'm saying, let's say I build only 199, 201 and above, okay, 201 and above, good. So let's say it's a 10 by 20, and I could put three of them up, right up against the wall, and we're saying that's all okay.
Sadly, yes.
And does that, is there-
You take a go where you're asking the locker and show.
Right.
But if you hated your neighbor and wanted to not hear his barking dog, so you put three sheds between the two of you?
You really could.
Nothing's stopping you.
And the height restriction, is there a height restriction on that, on?
Technically, no, but if-
You're not gonna get a-
You have to two heights of law, then that's-
You're not gonna get a 24-foot tall.
Wasn't there something in there?
You have 20, you have 30 in a row for 60, now you can put your RV in here.
Heaven's buildings.
You just leave 60.
If it's not a building, we won't even call it a building. Now, granted, that's, that's a building code interpretation, if you guys decide that you don't like that, and you wanted to go with something different, you can feel free to. I only know of one other city that regulates beneath 200 on purpose for this exact reason, but it's not common at all. Most cities operate under the understanding that it's 200 and above and 200 below. But if that rubs you the wrong way, you're welcome to be more restrictive than the state's code, that's okay.
And I want to bend the shut. Is that right? I prefer not to bend the shut.
I suspect since this hasn't been a problem, let's not make it one.
You almost became the fence holder.
Too shit.
You don't know how potion key.
Make it explicit, this covers these, except for, like, are those required perhaps?
We could have John Hard write that into the code if you like, I don't think it's a problem.
It's already, you know.
It's, it's already, yeah, building code, so it'd be redundant, but we could do it, it's in the handout already, and it will stay on the new handout for sure.
Could you have this accessory dwelling unit or structure?
It must have had the five foot.
Accessory dwelling structure for under 200 square feet, without a building permit.
Is there, what's the, let's-
150 square foot.
The maximum fence height in a rear is-
Six feet.
Six feet.
It's the same, yeah.
And the purpose of that is to what? To stop maybe viewing your neighbor?
Yeah, it's mostly visual, keep your dogs in.
I'm not saying not changing, I'm just thinking, boy, but I could go build an eight-foot shed, or something, eight-foot tall shed, and put my recliner sitting up there, right on the property line, and sun myself up there all day long, and look over my neighbor's backyard.
Correct.
And we're not gonna be able to do anything about that.
Correct.
The way we could, okay.
Correct, yeah.
I just wanna make sure.
Now, when you talk about accessory dwelling structures, there's a whole set of rules about sight and seeing over the-
An ADU, right.
It's just a, yeah, it's just an accessory structure, yeah, you're good.
Make a sun, a sun shed, and go sit up on top of it, with my little blow-up palm tree or something.
Correct. We've seen people do that, cause they say they wanna see hood, but they can't from their backyard, they build themselves a deck on their neighbor's fence to see hood, but there's nothing we can do about it.
Okay, okay.
You don't have a right to visual privacy.
Very good idea.
It's not a right.
There you go.
You agree that's a problem, this should be a problem like football.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Good boy.
Excellent point.
Yeah, that's right.
So, John, I-
So you wanted something in here on nude sun?
Nude something.
Is a lot.
Is a lot.
So on the eight feet, I know where it came from now, it was, it was our last revision, and we changed it from eight to 15?
I think so.
I'm just asking, cause I don't remember everything, but I wrote it down, and I didn't write down that we changed 15.
I don't think we should have.
I'll, I'll make a note of it.
Square foot accessory structure, accessory.
Make sure it's consistent with the discussion.
Residential.
I tried to write down if we were making- I tried to write down if we were making changes, and I don't have anything on that one.
No, it's the structure.
Oh, sorry, residential.
Yes, yes, exactly. Can't be more than 750 square feet or something. Okay. Not sure. Special size over eight, rear yard only 30.
Anything else under 100 square foot structure? We're in an ADUs. 3.207.
What page are we on? Oh, ADUs, okay.
So, there's no minimum size for ADUs?
But going back, did you want John to put some language in there? Because I don't know if he was here, going back on the, so we can form up what the mayor was saying.
Yeah, I don't know. Jim thought about hard adding in there, that 200 and below doesn't need a building permit, but then I heard Dennis say, don't do that, that's redundant. Building code says the same thing.
Oh, okay.
So, so I think Dennis trumped Jim, in other words.
No, I think it's 120 square.
I think it's 200. I could be wrong.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure.
By, by county, it's 200 square feet, yeah.
I wish you were kidding.
In the ADUs section, we wanted owner occupancy.
Yes.
One.
One of the buildings.
Remember, I told you, and you tried to pump, pump the difference.
But the law says.
No, I don't think the law says you can't do that. Because one of the things the law specifically says you can't do, isn't it?
Can't require one of them.
I'm pretty sure cities are allowed to require owner occupancy. I'm not positive of that, but I'm pretty sure.
Albany's pushing it really hard.
Carlos already has it in, in play.
Well, we talked about that.
Yeah, I could do it last year.
Yeah, we'll put it in, and we have to take that, take it out, but...
Make somebody beat it out of us.
Do we want to add a, a minimum size? Because if it's less than 200 square feet, and they don't require a structural review, should probably, I doubt anyone's gonna try to live in a 198-square-foot building, but...
Tiny houses.
Tiny, well, tiny houses.
Yeah, I don't think you can though.
Can you do a minimum?
No, because they're still regulated by state code.
Okay.
And I think for these, a building permit is required, because it's a residence.
Okay.
We changed one of the numbers on D. What was 800? Was 800.
Should we put something, they're saying they're all required to have a building permit review? So that people don't take their backyard shed and convert it into a house? Their 10 by 20?
We thought in that first sentence, or is there permitted, as a special use residential accessory dwellings, shall conform to all building code requirements and shall meet the following use of development standards.
That's not what ours says.
No, you're suggesting it.
Yes, that's the change he's going to make.
Yes.
I certainly don't think that could hurt. Except, didn't we learn from your tiny home workshop that, that wouldn't be regulated by the building department? If it was a certain kind, it would be regulated by, um...
Well, yeah, some of them are. Not anymore.
I knew they were changing something.
Yeah, okay, so, so not anymore.
Okay.
The kind that were, were built on a chassis used to be regulated as RVs.
From the DMV, yeah, okay.
Yeah, now it's subsection Q of the International Building Code.
Good.
Which has its own...
So, are we saying that these accessory dwelling units can be tiny houses? They don't have to be stick-built?
Oh, yes.
Yes.
That's correct. Now, you can regulate aspects of that, you can say, have to take the wheels off. You can say, has to be on a permanent foundation. But legally, we can't say, you're not allowed to roll them in and place them. We can't say only stick-built is allowed.
And we can't say the siding has to be the same siding?
As the house? It's too subjective. I will tell you, this has been stricken down another city.
What is subjective about that? The siding has to be the same.
I'm not gonna debate that with you, or have stricken that down.
What is subjective about the roof pitch has to be the same?
It's actually...
That's very specific.
It's not subjective.
It's a law.
Oh, a law that you can't do that?
Establishing those standards, yeah.
Yeah, but I think one of those laws is that you can't say it has to match the primary dwelling.
Okay, we're not saying that. We're saying it has to have the same roof angle, it has to have the same roof covering.
Oh, good, good.
It has to have the same siding, it has to have the same design windows.
I think that's better, that's different. So, yeah, you're getting more detailed, and that's acceptable. Saying it has to match, that's subjective.
Okay.
That's not what you just said, you got far more detail, which is good.
I want around a foundation.
Okay.
I want any, any trailering.
To be not visible.
To be, to be gone.
You can do that.
And that is the norm, generally, is to pull it in, set it on a continuous concrete block foundation.
But it doesn't say any of that here.
And yank the wheels out, yeah.
And skirt it.
I, I want the siding to be the same siding as the house has. I want the roof pitch to be the same.
That would be pit set?
Pardon me?
Pit set.
I want the pitch of the roof to be the same.
No, I mean, pit set means a foundation.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, as opposed to a slab set, sure.
Well, it's the same thing, I mean, yeah.
Okay, so we won't say it matches, but we want everything to be the same specifically, including the same color paint.
Same roof pitch, same color, same siding material.
Same siding material.
Same roofing material.
Same siding material's gonna be tough, though.
Why?
Why? Hardy back, hardy board, hardy plank is...
If you're going to buy one off the lot and bring it to the house, you're saying you have to declad it and put something, and that's fine.
They manufacture...
These are manufactured.
They're manufactured to order.
Exactly.
Okay. That's cool, that works. But I love the specificity you're, you're using, that's perfect, that's what we want to see.
Okay, I think I'm happy with that. Well, and, but the 1000 square feet's way too big.
So, we had 800 in maximum in our old draft.
Okay, what do you want? 800?
No, more than 800.
I like 800.
No less than, no less than?
I don't know that you can.
Yeah, I don't know that you can.
Why do you care?
What, the size of it?
Well, it's the 10 by 20 tiny house that comes in with sleeping loft. I guess if they can get that all under the roof pitch and...
Yeah, they meet all your other requirements, right down bottom.
So, no two-story, is that what you're saying?
No.
Many of them have a ceiling on all.
Well, there still can only be 25 feet.
Oh, yeah. They don't seem, I'm not aware of any true two-story. So, it could be.
Do you need to reference back to 1000 to maximum lock number?
Yeah, they, they claim that they have to still fall within the...
That this cannot, this cannot exceed the maximum lock number, so...
When we discussed that before, John, did we talk about off-street parking for each one of these? We've already covered that.
I don't think we require any additional on-street parking, off-street parking. You can, you're legally allowed to.
Yeah, I think we said...
We wrote it down.
Is it, I don't see it here.
One per ADU is what, what we said in the last one. But I don't see it here either.
Additional parking space.
No, I'm not. I'd like to say at least one for 20.
Do the utilities have to connect to the existing houses' utilities?
And that's allowed to. You're legally allowed to.
We don't need to put that in here without something in mind in the law. There's this huge argument of...
Once the utilities are separated, it's almost a partition.
Separately metered, or not.
Yeah, cities do it differently, I've seen it.
Yep, and STCs. Obviously.
I've also seen that very differently in different cities. Cities who want to intentionally encourage accessory dwelling units will say, no additional impact fees, no, no STCs at all. But then other cities who aren't necessarily encouraging of them say, absolutely, you need STCs, because you're impacting the system. And so, they require.
But I did see a legal challenge, the one where adding the ADU, adding a toilet, they're gonna charge a full SDC, but it was perfectly legal to build another bathroom in the existing house, adding a toilet, and no SDC was charged for that. And that challenge basically said, if you would allow that without charging a building permit, either an SDC, if you were remodeling an existing house or adding a toilet.
That's another one, I think I'd like to see them force us to... I'd like to see them take this to court to prove that.
Yeah, but there's nothing, there's nothing illegal about requiring separate meters for an ADU, if you want.
Not at all.
So, that would fix the problem. If you got a separate meter, then you've absolutely got an SDC.
Absolutely.
Okay, maybe not absolutely, you're right, thank you.
Well, under the first...
So, there's a number of things that have been talked about that you had in the previous, that's not in this edition. So, we talked about the area, it was lesser, 25% or 800 square feet, we talked about height, but they've only have the one, the accessory, which is...
I wouldn't have SDC charges.
We got that.
That's in here.
The old one said 20, the old one said 20, I mean, 25.
I think we could probably put that in.
I'll definitely go back to that.
I didn't catch that.
I was asking why you wouldn't have SDC charges.
So, was there a reason you took out the utility thing? Or I just missed our whole conversation?
No, I'm not sure that matters resolved yet. And it is not necessarily a zoning issue.
Okay.
What you had, you told from before, instead of... We have to come to an answer on which issue, but we probably need to make a decision.
Oh, yeah, I think...
Well, I think that if, with a simple way, we can require it. So, if, if they're putting in accessory dwelling, if it's not under a separate account, it cannot be rented. It could only be used for...
Extended family?
Yes, house. They cannot, they cannot rent it.
Tough to enforce.
We'd never enforce that one.
Yeah, I don't know how we enforce it.
Doesn't mean we couldn't do it, but it's, it's tough to enforce.
Well, you see that they have a rent sign out, so it can say.
Yeah.
You see that it's not on a separate account. Well, that's where you get the...
Why would, why would we not want it to be separately metered?
Well, that...
I understand it makes it difficult.
Well, because if you're genuinely gonna use it as a guest house, John built it so his daughter could live there for, you know, while she's in college. He doesn't want a separate meter for her account.
But it's gonna be pricey to put it in, too.
Sure, sure.
Through the existing...
Yeah.
In Albany, it's one of the largest manufacturers in the state of tiny houses. It's called Tiny Smart House, and I'd recommend checking out their website or going by the place and looking at, because it's one of the most innovative manufacturers around tiny houses, too. It's just, it's on Texas Street in Albany.
That way, pretty cool.
Yeah. It's pretty cool. I'd just go take a look, give you an idea of what we're talking about.
You're gonna address, you're gonna address with the initial requirement for ADUs? One per...
Yeah, it was inadvertently left out of this copy, but yeah, we, John's gonna re-add that. And again, we have to be careful with ADUs, because there are a lot of state laws on what we can and can't do, but everything you've discussed so far checks out.
So, the height in the old one was 20 feet, I see now it's 25. I don't, I don't, in the old one, it said 20, but not more than the height of the primary residence. And this one just says 25. But in no case, it shall not exceed the height.
Still, yeah, still has the exception.
A safety valve there, I think.
Also, remember that accessory dwelling units are not necessarily a separate dwelling unit. It can be...
Oh, yeah. A basement, an attic.
It can be a basement, it can be, it's not uncommon, like the space over a garage, to be converted, have its own entrance, that kind of thing.
In that case, limiting it to the same height as the primary house could be problematic.
So, it could be part of the house?
Mm-hmm.
So, you've turned the original house into a duplex?
Yeah, it has to meet these design standards.
But, yeah.
So, it's the classic, you know, grandma apartment, out, you know, kind of in the back part of the house, kind of thing, with its own entrance.
Well, here it says that it has to be separated from the primary residence, by its own speech.
If it is a separate residence, and maybe that ought to be...
Yeah.
And that's not an accessory dwelling unit, in theory.
Yeah, that's not really an accessory dwelling.
You mean if it's part of the house?
Yeah.
No, not that, well, it's part of the definition of ADUs, is they can either be freestanding or they can be in addition to an existing house.
Don't put that definition in our definitions.
Why?
Well...
I don't like it.
We don't have a choice, as soon as the city goes over 2,500 people. Then state law requires us that we have to let people put an ADU in their house, inside their house, if they want to.
Well, it has to, we have to allow that also.
Once we're over 2,500, we're tech, it's, if not world-class, that line now.
We were there last week.
Fair enough.
I, I understood that we had to allow the separate units, I didn't realize we had to allow it.
Within a unit?
Within the unit.
You can say just one.
You might find that more palatable.
Might be more... Well, it might be more...
Less design impacts, yeah.
If they're just putting on a big renovation, to turn it into an effective duplex.
But do they, they need a separate entrance, is that one of the definitions?
That's not a requirement, but you could certainly add that as a requirement.
Yeah.
It's not in here now.
Because right now, I have a guest room. Is that an ADU?
No.
Does that have a kitchen?
No.
It's a separate kitchen that does that.
Where's that?
And then you're gonna get the Kevin's weighing in and talking about fire separation, too, but...
Make sure those definitions are clear, because their state law covers a lot of that stuff.
Should reference, what is that, number 10? What is that?
No, that was for something different. Chapter 10.
Chapter 10.
That's manufacturing.
Yeah, I suppose in section A here, John, we probably should, it says location, we probably should add to that, or internal to the structure.
I did.
So we have had a number of people that have come and asked me about this. So it's not like it's, this isn't gonna impact some folks. We've had a lot of people ask about what they can do with their shed, or what they can do with their property on adding an ADU. So it is something that some of the citizens are aware of, and they've come and asked them questions about it. And I've told them it's gonna be in the new code. But it's under discussion. They've asked specific stuff on metering and whatnot, but I said...
As currently written, it doesn't require anything except a building permit.
Yeah.
There's no, there's no discretionary review of this. Planning would look at the building permit review part of it, make sure it meets these criteria, but that's it. Straight to building permit.
Because it stands right in there.
I think we need to think more about the utility connections, but I can see one big negative to having them have their own connections is we're gonna tear up our roofs a lot.
Yeah.
Give them all these connections.
Well, and if we give them all these connections, we've effectively partitioned the property. If they have separate utilities, they're pretty well partitioned. And I, I think we need to avoid that. I, I would prefer they not be able to have a separate connection.
You're allowed to write the code that way, where you can't get a separate meter. That certainly discourages rentals and encourages guest suites.
I agree. That's, that's awesome. That's a good approach. No, really.
Okay.
Well, yeah, because they can't separately meter the...
Right.
They've got to charge their...
Yeah, that's up to them at that point, yeah. Like you said, they could put on a private meter if they wanted. It just wouldn't be a city meter. Same thing as a manufactured home park.
John, in among your notes, you do have that we were fairly had him at about wanting one of the residents to be owner occupied.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's there.
Thank you.
Attached dwellings. These are new aside yard units. It's just the language is here, we're allowing it, someone that was...
These are your duplex rules, right?
Well, they could be fourplex.
Sure, sure.
So these are individually platted, so it's not duplex. These are individually platted.
But the common...
Still zero outline.
So these wouldn't be allowed in every zone, because not all the zones...
Yeah.
We've only got two zones. I'm sorry, what?
Brownstone.
Well, there's only two zones that this would be permitted in, though, right?
Right now, RM and MU. It's the only place you could get the density.
Just checking.
I thought the mixed use, the mixed use, we were not gonna allow single-family residents the last we talked.
Well, there you go. See, these are attached, so...
Okay.
They wouldn't be.
But if they were individually platted, are they not a single-family?
I thought we were allowing a single-family.
Then they'd be a single-family attached. The term I've always hated, because it doesn't make a damn bit of sense, it's multifamily if it's attached.
That's not.
They're not attached.
Yeah, on small...
Okay.
To use...
So there wouldn't be a condo?
Not condos.
Okay.
Because you actually would own the land. Your plot would just be narrow lots.
That's recipe for the...
Yeah. You only own the building. In the case of a condo.
Right.
Yeah. As opposed to detached single-family where it's a platted lot, it's not condo-ized.
That's the best way to go.
All right, we've talked about temporary uses, 3.08. Trees and fireworks? Detached.
It said they require a temporary business permit? We don't have that, right?
We don't.
She doesn't have a permanent business permit.
B8? You're saying B8?
Yes, BA.
What says the operator shall obtain all permits required by other agencies, not us?
B7.
Oh, B7, that's correct. Operator shall provide the required information. ADUs will be taken, well, why don't you have that? Temporary business permit.
We only have one council member here to answer that, so carry on. There's been a battle with them.
All right, I'll take it out.
Well, may I ask you a question? Under A3, what, what is A3 in terms of temporary use of locations? What's a temporary use in this situation?
A lemonade stand.
Oh, okay. Well, okay, I thought where it said tree and fireworks.
Oh, trees and fireworks, yeah. So let's, this could perhaps be tree sales at the lot of a church that happens to be in the residential zone, selling Christmas trees.
Or a big vacant residential lot.
But in the first sentence, it says sales should be located in residential or...
But there says... Or may occur at schools or churches. Okay. Ed, you're taking out the number seven, the temporary business permit.
So on the next one down, C, food services. Now, I'm assuming that is talking about food trucks.
Yeah.
And we don't have anything in there. I have a note about we want utilities attached. I have a question mark.
Food trucks need to comply with the Lynn County requirements. They're really the people who...
But I don't think they have to be attached to utilities.
And I don't know.
I have us crossing that whole C out.
Yeah, so they don't.
But we do need...
Yeah, I think we were gonna bring in a food truck section.
Yeah.
Which I didn't see in this version, but...
Kevin, I said there's gonna be a few things plugged in when we get to the H and D draft.
Okay.
Definitely have some food truck sections.
I sent you a whole food truck section from a city that I just love. I think it's very functional.
And then I said for D, on temporary construction, I put on here more details there. Not really sure why, but we wanted more details for that one. I don't know.
And that would only be during, you know, when a new business comes in and they've got an construction trailer on site during construction, so it'll need more detail.
Okay. And then RVs is temporary habitation. Utilities are not to run across the I box. We have that. We see it.
Come straight with me.
Yeah.
That's, that's in our code.
It's in your code?
That's in the municipal code.
Okay, so we don't need it here?
We do need it here.
Okay. All right.
All right, bed and breakfast.
All steaks and cheese, right?
Any issues with this? Are there any bed and breakfasts in town now?
I don't think so.
One of the things I did want to bring up on this one, under meals, under operation requirements, D, it says meals. I don't know what you did work with, they just agonized over this. Not like you ever agonized over ADU, too. But is, why limited to breakfast? Wouldn't lunch also be okay? I mean, we've been around and around and around about that. Do you care, limited to breakfast, closet B and B?
Why would we do that? You mean the cancer brunch?
Community, who made you decide about competing with restaurants or whatever? We don't have that issue.
Let's hear it over.
Yeah. There's kind of a direct question to it. If you start serving three meals a day, and something turns turning into a...
An inn.
An inn.
In the restaurant.
Exactly. Which is a little more a commercial use thing. But I, this other community, they said, come on breakfast. I mean, breakfast and lunch, as long as it's not dinner, they didn't see that that was violating a character issue. Who's gonna force that?
I, I don't like lunch.
That's Jakes.
City staff has a better one.
You have one vote for disallowing lunch.
Shouldn't have brought that up.
Okay.
Do you care?
I don't really care.
I don't like lunch.
Why?
Take out lunch, leave breakfast only. I don't care.
Yeah, we do. It is as it is, okay.
On signs, on the old version, we had signs could only be eight, four square feet, and I see it's changed to eight.
It is.
Maybe we decided that, but I didn't write a note.
I think we just, we could, we take this to 2.4.
Bed and breakfast, yeah, can certainly be four.
Eight does seem kinda big.
It does seem kinda big. Of course, four square feet is, you know, just two by two.
It's a real estate sign, yeah.
Basically. It's two by four.
It's in a residential area. Do we want signs that be in the residential area? I don't know. I'm asking.
Well, it's not eliminated, and it's wall mounted.
But that sign will could not be placed on the fence.
That's so true. Remember that?
And we're differentiating fence and wall, right? In our definitions.
So eight is okay? All right. Okay.
That's still a pretty good size.
It is.
So was the consensus four or eight?
What?
Or did you wanna split the difference and go six?
Exactly, put the barbed wire on it.
That's right.
Yeah.
So it's got the wall.
I'm fine with that.
I like eight.
Okay, sounds like the consensus is eight.
We're at eight.
And the standards on operations, we just looked at, across us, it's site design review, which means you see it. All right, houses of worship. Have your setbacks on A. Oh, no, that's...
We had something about lighting.
Yeah, we did, exterior lighting.
Yeah, we did.
Sort of, I think it's more a screening issue.
Ceiling needs screened from a basic property. It's supposed to not cause glare or direct illumination. Got it. Bus storage, it'd have to be stored off the street if I rent my house out to the church. You can't see 25% of the quarter.
The bus is over one ton, so it's gotta be inside.
Behind a fence.
All right, general standards, lot record, lots of letting in partial screen, protection runoff capacity.
We had, in that runoff stuff, we kind of defined debris a little better, I think.
Well, we added sediment.
Salt, silt and sediment.
Yeah.
Because debris would just be the garbage.
Now to our B.
Arms. Do you want to bring that, ma'am? When we were doing our math exercise earlier, the three of us, we kept running into a problem with lot sizes versus livestock. And the idea was, do we want to keep lots that have current livestock in the urban transition zone on purpose, so they can keep their livestock, because it tied to zoning? The more we went around and around and around with this, we realized a better solution would probably be to tie the ability to have livestock to the size of a lot regardless of zoning. And that would make so much of this so much easier. And so I didn't know what that, and that kind of married with some of what you guys were saying earlier, I think. Because you had some frustrations with somebody having a lot that was big, but with the wrong zone, so they couldn't have goats, and that rubbed you the wrong way, tying it to a lot size, and how big a lot is, you guys can decide. Hopefully not 10,000 square feet, say something bigger than 10,000 square feet.
Okay, when I did all kinds of research on this for City Yampa.
Okay.
And it seemed that any city that regulated it, no, any city that happened to allow livestock and just didn't prohibit it, generally had a minimum size of 20,000 square feet per animal.
Per animal?
No, no.
No, that can't be right.
No, it had to be a minimum of 20,000 square feet.
That makes sense.
And then there was some limit on the number of animals, and others would go in with that. And in fact...
But it wasn't tied to zoning. See, I like that.
No, it wasn't tied to zoning. Hope County had the ADU, no, AEU, Animal Equivalent Unit.
Oh, yeah, we've talked about this before.
Yeah, yeah, which was a sheep, was a standard AEU. And so a cow was like four AEUs, but a goat was 0.2 AEU. And they regulated 80.
That is great.
Yeah. But you don't have equivalent than 0.1 if it was a hog, right? That's right. That's right. If it weren't a hog.
That would simply have had that for an AEU.
Yeah. So... Do you want a limit? Lifestyle, it's prohibited.
It has to be unprohibited.
Yeah.
We have people that have, that have farms in the family for 80 years. This is a third and fourth generation families on these properties.
Well, right now, if you look at the...
They sell eggs, they sell, they raise beef and they sell it.
If you look at the urban transition zone, one of the uses that's allowed in the urban transition zone, that's not allowed in any other zone, is crop cultivation and livestock. We were just hoping to scratch livestock from that and just say crop cultivation, and then just tie livestock to this section that we're talking about now.
Yeah, because this says unless specifically permitted by the underlying zone, the following limitations.
Well, we could probably change that and just say livestock is permitted on lots bigger than 20,000 square feet, period. And don't mention zone at all.
Do we have anybody in town that has it on a smaller lot? I mean, 20,000?
I'm not sure that's the right question to be asking. The right question to be asking is, would you want people under a 20,000 square foot lot to have livestock?
20,000. No.
I think that's fine, that's a favorite of us.
Don't say chicken, don't say chicken. Don't say chicken.
I like tiny, to lot size.
I like tiny, to lot size, too.
20,000, half acre.
The commission has spoken.
But, but is that big enough? I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
I would like to know, yeah.
Well, I think in this city, generally speaking, a 10,000 square foot lot is supposed to be considered urban.
Yeah.
And I think people who have a 10,000 square foot lot should have a fair expectation that their neighbors won't be having livestock.
Right.
But when, next to a 20,000 square foot house, or 25,000 square foot lot, I think probably has a fair expectation that they're gonna have some animals on it, because it's a larger lot.
But that's only a double lot. I would expect most, most of the places that this occurs is on the two and a half acres.
Oh, you're saying bigger, okay. I'm not gonna argue that.
I agree. I would say an acre, because you've got, you've got a 20,000 foot lot. Your house is gonna take up half an acre lot, so that just leaves a little bitty 10,000.
I'm thrilled to hear you guys saying, I'm not about to fight you.
Enough room for a stable, I know. I'd...
I worked in an area that it was three legs per acre. So you couldn't have a whole horse there.
How about three legs per acre?
I don't mean to be difficult to advocate, but I think horses might be the problem there. You might have somebody with a 20,000 square foot lot that might have some stables.
Oh, yeah.
You're not gonna have pigs and chickens, but...
That's not a good idea, of course.
Okay, good. I'm not about to argue with you on that. That sounds good to me.
Can I ask a question on crops? We say here that goat produce or similar food is parcelled on site. Is that really an issue?
That's what my...
That's the anti-farm stand provision.
I think there should be farm stands.
I do, too.
Yeah, that's why we have this whole thing circled, outlined, highlighted.
Yeah, that's what I did.
It's A, B.
I crossed it out.
Well, did we agree on an acre? What did we, or have we...
Let's go back to farm stands and talk about acre.
Okay.
If you have an acre or more, you can raise pigs. Yeah, and how many, I think...
Ooh. Ooh.
A U.
Especially if it's pigs.
Pigs.
I think it's... You know what? Farmer only have three-legged pigs. Except the pigs, you know, eat them all at once.
I thought it was so, I thought he's put it on the, the lot, the building.
No, you don't eat them all at once. You know, one of the things I think that we may want to mention, you know, thinking about pigs, we're looking at this, we talk about breeding, raising and stuff. We may want to make sure that they can breed and raise, you know, with so many pigs. Because if you have someone coming in and put pigs in, and then, you know, put in a big pig farm in one of our big parcels, they're gonna have to have influence, stuff to deal with if it's...
Aren't there, there's gotta be some regulations on density of animals.
Well, DQ has regulations on the newer stuff. I don't think there's a density limit in state. Actually, we didn't mind researching this stuff for a year now.
So it's lots over one acre. Did you want to introduce some density provisions then?
Can you put a limit on, on the type of animals?
Sure.
How about eliminating pigs?
No.
Oh, yeah.
It's got camels, it's got pigs. It's got cattle.
Well...
Camels.
Yeah, I think you can have them, if they just have a limit, there was no more, you know, you can't raise more than X number of pigs.
Per acre, or do you, do you say, I mean, depending on the size of a lot, too, right? Yeah. So, so many per acre, or whatever?
I don't know the number, I don't either.
It could get big.
I don't like big.
Jake, you like bacon?
I like bacon, but I don't like pigs.
We have a lot of properties that are produced through farmland, see, you think, like, we're familiar with variety. I shoot with rope, there's a bunch of very rich farmland, those are their options.
But aren't most of those properties two and a half acres and larger?
Two and a half acres, okay.
That's my thought, is because the one acre is too small.
About 2.5 acres are larger.
And I think you're getting into some of the people that already have stuff that's smaller than that.
And then they're legally not-
I don't know, somebody with one acre might, might definitely, a chicken coop.
What about chickens?
This could be an all-night discussion on chickens.
I had a case recently in Albany where on one acre parcel, the, and it was a law school where I was sitting on, and it got decided that the people started bringing in chickens, and they had 25 hens and two roosters, and they argued that that was legal under there because of the way the Albany code bred, and it was legal, but the neighbors around were getting all upset about it. So, I know that it just, it can, it can just get out of hand with chickens.
We have an order.
We know that.
Yeah, we do that, but I don't know, we need to be careful if this is going to change any of that.
Well, let's leave chickens in the municipal code and not in the land use code. That way, we can not talk about it and move on.
I think we ought to make a point of that. I would say chickens are regulated by municipal code.
How about if we go to two and a half acres for pigs?
It should just be a minimum amount of livestock.
Farm animals.
Having to go through a process where we notice all the neighbors, some don't have chickens. Because obviously, we're out of the market, I mean, there's issues all over, because a lot of people like chickens.
I'd say it's not a land use issue.
Oh, chicken.
Yeah, we have, we have an ordinance on chickens.
We have an ordinance on chickens.
So I like what John said, just put in there that chickens are regulated by municipal.
Four chickens allowed, so, is that what it is?
And pigs can be.
Let's go on.
But what about, you know, all these other animals?
Let us do some research on it.
Yeah.
I think we'd just be guessing on numbers and need for a certain amount of grazing land for a cow or something. I mean, I just-
Give, give Ryan a sense, but he's actually here, he's raising cattle, and who knows what else?
Chickens.
Been around a long time, probably for a while to get inside horse.
Well, he's the one that I was talking about, that his grandfather bought that property.
What it could be as simple as, we have some chickens that later we don't have here, that they have to have a minimum of one acre, and to have the livestock on it requires a conditional use. So then you can put a limitation on what they can have.
Well, we'd still have to start making standards for that then at some point.
Yeah, but we could get, if we don't have it here, it's different. That way, you can't have someone come in so that anytime something happens, they have to know what they could do on it.
Just the purpose of conditional use permit is to assess potential impacts and development of getting strategies.
Sure. Sure.
Carry on.
Would that be an issue, though, before the planning commission, or would that be administrative approval? Staff uses by the commission.
So what does that mean?
Guided by staff.
So like you have animals already, they're illegal non-conforming, but then what if they rotate through their cattle?
Or they want to bring in one additional cow? Or they want to bring on one additional cow, in theory, they need to come back to support it.
It gets really complicated, because a legal non-conforming use is legal as long as they don't expand the use. Well, how in the world do we know if they're expanding the use when their use is livestock?
And also, the non-conforming permission, say if you cease or diminish it, in one year, you could reestablish it. So as long as they're replacing their livestock, but not increasing the numbers, it probably is a-
But how do we know that? Do we have a cow counter?
I think we need a cow counter.
A cow counter.
Jake, that's your job.
There's Jake!
Other duties aside.
One, two, three.
You have time because you didn't have to do the bits for now.
Bingo, absolutely.
The one problem we have is animal abuse, we say, with too many horses on a small lot, as a result, end up in need even when the door are not. As you're getting too many horses in all small populations, we've had that issue along with the bird diet.
But, yeah, land use isn't going to do that.
That's a shame.
But understand what that means, though, if we make it a conditional use permit, what that means is if somebody comes in and wants to partition their property, even if both lots would be big enough to stay in urban transition, they're illegal non-conforming use, and they're going to have to get a conditional use permit for their horses or livestock before they partition the property.
Or maybe they have to get rid of the livestock when they have to connect to the sewer and the water.
They don't have to do that now until they go to RL.
Okay.
Take away the, I think we just need to come in and state, you know-
Let's have some standards.
You can still have standards, yeah, standards are fine, but you don't have to require the CUP for it. They're still impossible to enforce, but-
Right now, the draft I had at the moment says shall be allowed on properties of 2.5, lots of 2.5 acres or larger.
I like that.
Chickens are separately regulated, they want to have something less than that, then it would be a conditional use. So if they want to look at something less, you know, if they wanted to have something less than that.
On an acre?
Huh?
They want livestock on an acre, it's a CUP?
Yeah, anything between an acre and two and a half is.
Well, let's not tell them that.
We'll write that, write that in the transparenting.
Yeah.
Because we have.
We can find it.
Did we accept Kevin's idea?
Please, please.
You can do, do like they did in Independence, they grandfathered a horse in downtown, and when the horse died, they brought another one in and nobody knew it.
Painted his whiskers gray and called it Sam.
Yeah, called him the same horse.
It's lived for 100 years.
Horse is older than the town.
How we doing? Any exceptions to anything I want to do here?
So did we take out the food stand? Food stands, the, the-
He's going to redo the food stands altogether.
Okay, alright.
We're going to have a food stand section, so I'm taking that. Okay.
Page 76, R5.
Any additions to structures, miscellaneous exceptions to set, setbacks. Special setbacks for-
Why did we take out the service station, where did they go? We had that.
Where? Under miscellaneous.
Types of streets, E and F. And the, I mean, not in the old code, but in the-
Yeah, I have it written down here that we talked about it and everybody decided it was okay to leave. You're saying it's gone?
What did it say?
Automobile service station setbacks, in the districts where automobile service stations are permitted, freestanding gasoline pumps and pump stands may occupy a required exterior yard provided they are a minimum of 15 feet from the property.
What, what page is that?
Well, it was in the, the original draft.
Yeah, the old draft.
And it would be on page 78, in the new one, it would be F.
Yeah, it's F on the old one, page 78.
I have a question on that. How is it determined 50 feet from the top of each bank? How do you determine the top of each bank?
Send Jacob there.
Do you have a study done?
There's a, there's a standard.
Okay, okay, as long as-
There's an engineering definition for it.
But that doesn't mean we know where it is without going through a process to figure that out.
Okay.
Yeah, oftentimes, a study is done.
You can define what that is. It's defined what, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay.
Permitted uses in all zones, which is basically public facilities. And we have 3.211.11 non-conforming uses.
But you took out partition subdivisions and planned units, unit developments.
For what?
Under permitted uses. It used to be E.
Oh, that's because it wasn't a use, so we removed it. That's a type of case, it's not a use.
Okay.
So, we bound it.
Fine with that, I'll just ignore it.
Okay, the non-conforming standards are pretty straightforward. The one that's probably most important to note is exemptions, talking about single-family homes, can be modified or expanded without the need to comply with the other things having to do with non-conforming use.
We took that out in the-
Yeah, I got that crossed out, too.
With what?
E.
E.
E, 0.11.
We did.
And you said something about most communities don't apply this to single-family.
Most communities do, as a matter of compassionate care.
Well, we added the residential mixed zone, density zone.
I think we're-
Maybe we just don't even need this.
Connie, I think that's kind of, I like these.
Yeah, we should write C also, for non-conform use, we have a quite big discussion.
We may have, I'll just go back and reconcile this with our discussion.
No, I think after all the argument on C, we decided we really wanted to save that, because of the seed people in particular, we wanted to let them rebuild after it burned down.
I thought it was the opposite.
Okay.
Because better, because if you're going to do that, then you should look at rezoning that. It doesn't make sense to have that zone, and know that if something happens, that they're allowed to rebuild.
Well, we were talking about rezoning, a lot of, well, okay, that's fine.
Well, some, some municipalities have a percentage for rebuilding, when they're non-conforming.
Yeah, that's very common.
We don't have that, though, do we? In other words, if half of it or 30% or something, then you have to-
Well, we talked about, well, we don't have a lot of non-conforming uses, I don't think, currently.
Good point.
But the biggest thing is, is, you know, they're not just an act, because they sell commercially, so it's more of a, it's not just a secret. Pellets and other stuff there. I don't think they do pellets anymore, they're just doing secret. Are they, they put in a pellet? Yeah, yeah, they did have a rebuilt pellet, though.
Yeah, a lot of cities say that if it's more than 80% or something like that destroyed, it can't be rebuilt.
Yeah, assessed value.
Based on assessed value.
And you say, you even define that further, it'd be on tax roll.
What if we did decide that, didn't we?
Is that not a century farm? Has that farm not been in that family for 100 years? And if it burns down, we're going to tell them they couldn't put it back?
I, I don't think it's been in the family 100 years.
No, I, I'm not, I'm not sure.
That's my cousin, it was her first.
Well, she told me that she remembered, she was unhappy when the corn planter got parked and Dad sold the horse and started plowing with a tractor, she's quite old.
Her would probably be 100 today.
Okay, well, I, I don't know, I just-
Somehow, though, I think the whole purpose of the conversation was, somehow we need to get non-conforming into conforming. And that was the whole conversation, was how do we do that but yet still support our community?
Be compassionate.
Be compassionate but support. So, I don't remember what we ended up with, there was a lot of discussions.
The language as it is here is very weak, because it allows the restoration. Most cities' non-conforming standards do not allow rebuilding something that's-
No, but Kevin said he thought we crossed it out.
Yeah.
So, from the minutes from that meeting, it says-
Well, this one even allows you to expand, says.
So, from the minute from that meeting, it says, "Non-conforming structures were discussed, a provision for rebuilding structures that were destroyed from natural disasters was discussed." Doesn't say if it was decided or not.
We're telling them we cropped it, it was crossed out.
Okay, I can go back and listen to the recording if you guys want.
Well, it doesn't matter what we did, what do we want to do?
Okay.
We want to allow non-conforming structures to be rebuilt, we're not talking about single-family homes and everything else, they can be rebuilt after they're destroyed.
So, my biggest concern is, we know that right now, all that property is going to go into residential. If you allow that, and something happens, and they come in and rebuild, now we can start hearing complaints about noise and stuff from the operations, dust from the operations. It's just, I, I think you either need to rezone it, if you want to let it stay there, rezone it so that it can allow them to put the setbacks before. I guess my thing is that, I mean, would the property owner be aware of that? Would we make them aware of that?
What's that?
That, you know, they're, they're a non-conforming use in a residential, you know, and if it were, something were to happen, you couldn't rebuild, I mean-
And that's the way it is today.
It's the way it is today. I know it is, but do they know that?
Did they, did that property owner push to get that?
Or owner of that property was the one that-
He pushed to rezone it.
But somehow-
I mean, they're going to get a penalty for that.
We'll just keep that from them.
Oh, yeah, put your-
We need to make the non-conforming performing, I mean, somehow, but I, but I, but I get the fact that that's their business, that's their livelihood. So, I'm kind of with you, let's rezone it. If they want to sell it and put houses on it, they're going to have to come ask to have the zoning.
Because people running a business do, they don't live there. It's their mother living there.
Yeah, Sharon lives there.
The people running a business are living elsewhere.
With their grandkids, aren't they?
Sharon's son.
Or son and grandkids.
It's just Sharon living in a house.
Is that the only one?
Not once we're done. Not once we're done.
Well, I agree with Connie, I think we should get rid of non-conforming if we can. And this is a good chance to do that, they could rezone.
For them to rezone-
How the rest of you feel about that?
All they have to do is come in and ask for a rezone, I mean, that probably costs them money.
Sure, sure, it's an application, it goes to you and the city council, it probably costs them $3,000 by the time it's all said and done. They could come to the city council and request the city council to do it as a city-initiated one, so it'd be free, but that's very rare.
Yeah.
But they could do that in the context of this map review.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely.
Right now.
Yeah, matter of fact, when we go to here, you're going to see a lot of people coming in and requesting different zones, and you guys get to decide if there's merit to their request or not.
Okay.
But if we made that change now, our zones we have to work with are, what zones that we have?
So- It becomes industrial?
I have no idea which property you guys have been talking about for the past half hour. I don't live here, I don't know his cousin.
I'm part of the same clan.
Who's a shoe string.
Oh, okay, 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 got it.
That'd be kind of weird, something that's industrial.
Yep.
Why would you zone it industrial?
Yeah, why?
That's what they're doing.
It's not industrial, it's urban transition.
Because that business is industrial.
But right now, they're saying, why would we, that if you made it the current use of that, to make it conforming, you would have to be industrial. Yeah, you wouldn't do.
I'd recommend just keeping them non-conforming if it burns down, that's it. Hard to.
Probably the right way to go.
So we cross out C.
They could have them, that they could come in and request a zone change at that point.
Well, they could request it.
They could request it anytime they want, yeah.
But we're saying they could request a zone change to put it back.
Oh, as part of the hearings to this?
Sure.
But, but you're saying if it did burn down, they could request a zone change to basically go?
If they got a zone change to industrial, yes.
Yes.
So it changes.
Highly unlikely.
Yeah, kick C out.
Remove it? And we're removing E also then? Or no?
Kick C out.
Or you could add percentages to it, like a lot of other jurisdictions do. That's your compassion aspect.
Yeah, or I might say if it's damaged or destroyed to an extent greater than 50% of its increased value.
There you go, then they can rebuild it. If it's more than that, you've crossed the magic threshold and you've got to conform with the use now.
But that's not getting rid of our non-conforming.
That's, that's correct, but it adds in an element of compassion if part of it burns down.
Yeah, but if the public interest really wants that to change.
Oh, fair, fair.
They need to be compassionate.
Yeah.
I think there's a basis to be compassionate for single-family homes.
Well-
Not, not for somebody that's been there that long, no.
What, good point, though, is that what is the definition of damaged? I think you're going to need to put a percentage in there, because it's damaged, just their little shed burns up, and 1%?
Got it.
Sure.
So, we may need to put some percentage in there, some quantification of what damaged is.
5%.
It would say to an extent where-
50%.
Repair exceeds 50% of the increased value of the structures.
Okay, structures plural, or damaged structure, the damaged structure?
The damaged structure, yeah.
Okay, but, okay, sorry, devil's advocate. Okay, but, okay, sorry, devil's advocate, you do that. So, let's say it's a twenty-by-twenty seed storage facility, which is a minor...
Right.
And, and say that that is destroyed fifty percent. You take that down, plus the entire industry that they have?
No, just the building.
Just that building, okay.
You couldn't rebuild the building. And I just threw fifty percent out.
Yeah, it did not go fifty.
Somebody used to say eighty, I think, I've heard you some more, when he says eighty in there.
Well, eighty's real popular. That's a very definite line, too.
Well, most of those buildings out there have fire, most likely it's been burned down.
Yeah.
So then what happens if they wanna build a new building, they're gonna have to come in? Not us, but they'll have, they have to build it conforming.
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah.
So they can build another building. We're not saying they can't build another building, we just have to...
But if they do, it has to be...
It has to be a residential accessory structure.
A new building still has to conform with the new codes.
Or residential structure.
What's a lot of the urban traditions on, what they are?
Yeah. Oh, so you're saying some farming structures would be allowed because cultivation is part of it?
It's, it's not that part, it's the... Industrial part of it.
Right.
Of course.
If I start snoring, wake me up.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is, we'll do the replacement using the eighty percent now. Eighty percent of appraised value, not assessed value.
Good man.
Appraised value.
I appreciate that.
Appraisable.
That's an important distinction, yeah.
Okay.
So were you hoping to get through the rest of the code this evening, or?
And the map.
Really? Good thing we brought lots of food. Really?
Hey. I love coming back here and getting free maps, it's great. More food, more food.
Nice, no more food.
Some more food. I'm not the one dragging this out. Like I told Sweet Home, it ain't right with this stuff to take so much time. Okay, well, that really takes us to the end of Article Three. We have Article Four, which is the process article. How do you do a conditional use, don't change, all that kind of stuff. And then we need to go through it one last time before we think about areas. Shall we save that for the next study together?
I had loads of comments on the criteria throughout that whole section, but you've got those all in the notes I passed on anyway, so...
So, Chair, what do you want to do?
Well, shall we call her tonight?
I'm okay, but I don't know how anyone else is.
Well, we'll go to nine o'clock and call her tonight.
So, John, just a comment. So you have Matt's stuff?
Yep.
Does it make sense to get that in, send it to, so that we're not...
He's got it already, he's had it.
But they haven't seen it.
They haven't seen it, no.
Does it make sense to get that out rather than just reviewing and then going over stuff that is probably likely already in there? The last twenty minutes talked about this and then come back and have what we have.
Send us, send us that, you have my stuff, too.
Yeah, so let's make sure that Article Four incorporates all this.
Yeah, maybe what you could do is incorporate his and mine in there.
Yeah.
We redistribute that, review that, while we come back in.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Those had some major revisions.
There's quite a bit that Matt and Forrest have, often you haven't seen now.
Well, I think you've seen it.
Oh, they haven't seen it, yeah.
So you're gonna send us that so we have a chance to do it before the next meeting?
Oh, yeah. But, I think, I thought this, if we could give it, then we could give it back.
Yeah, that's correct, let's do that till nine o'clock.
Okay. All right, the first question I wanted to get from you right away, coming to you next, is, there are some... And where should I put this board if you guys can see it? Johnny, gonna get it right in front of me? The city has some very strange, um, city limit lines, and I want to fix it.
You want to fix it?
I want to fix it.
What?
And I can fix it, very easily, but I need your blessing to move forward with it, and then I need someone's blessing to move forward with it. And I want to knock that question out of the way right away.
So you're saying you wanna change the boundaries of the city?
Yes, ma'am. See this? You probably can't, there's a green line that comes down here, and all this railroad right away is technically not in our city. That's clearly a mistake. And then up here, as well, there's another railroad line that our city wraps around. Clearly a mistake. These are both within the urban growth boundary, and I can get them annexed in just a couple of months with a few easy staff reports, but I need direction from you to allow me to do it, and you, well, not you, but city council.
So literally, they're almost in there anyway, right?
Yeah. See this area here? This is technically not in the city.
Are you talking about just the railroad tracks?
Yes.
There's fingers, part of the railroad track is all in the city, but here...
Most of it.
This is a finger here that comes down, so we, we come up here, we come back down, and then we come cross-cross here, and then come back up.
No.
So that's outside the city.
Just part of the county?
Technically, it's unincorporated county, and we wanna fix that, 'cause inside our urban growth boundary is clearly a mapping error. I can fix it pretty easily, just need you guys to say, go forward and conquer.
So you're, you're talking about the white areas on my map?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, it's exactly correct. And, and this little film right there, you can't even see.
That white area up in here.
Yeah.
Kevin?
Well, the railroad...
The white area here, for sale, I had for four million bucks.
What's that?
That white area, just, no, up front, up, make that, up and over, that's for sale, I had for four million bucks.
Yeah, they came in and asked us, and we, someone's come in, and we already told them, you don't have access, you're not gonna have access when... We didn't even tell them. Didn't even tell them. So, well, there's no access. So, that was the first question. If you'll let me go forward and annex.
My vote is yes.
I figured you'd say that.
It was a benefit.
It cleans up, so, like, when we had to do the city boundary for the entire district stuff? You have to describe all that, which is silly. I think what happened is back when additional stuff was annexed into the city at some point, they just annexed the new properties that were being, and they drew the boundary of that property and said, okay, this is the place we're putting it, so it excluded the little railroad on both sides.
So do we get French fries, please, with the railroad?
I'll be gone through that a couple of times.
Go ahead.
The railroad would have to concur.
Yeah?
Yeah.
I would transmit it to them and see what they say.
All right. They'd have to concur.
Silence is consent. No.
Well, do they? They're considered an island.
An island, wow.
'Cause three sides are surrounded by three sides, actually, of both cases.
Probably best, but you're probably right, you probably could force it because of that.
Yeah, what benefit do they get from it?
It doesn't mean much to them one way or the other.
Well, we would get, we'd get property tax from them.
Well, we get property tax from it.
Yes.
Hopefully they'll turn into legal quid pro quo. I sound like we need to...
If it does, we turn off the faucet and stop trying, who cares, we've lost nothing.
They sound like this group, they say, yeah, let's do it.
Okay, all right, well, we'll bring this to council and see what they think. All right, so this is the existing zoning that we have today. Janelle and Kevin and I sat down and kind of took the zones that are proposed in the new ordinance and tried mapping them on here. We weren't all that sensitive to try to keep a one-to-one, because the minute one property changes the zone, you might as well change all of them. And so it doesn't really matter, we're not beholden to stay exactly what it was before, especially because these zones aren't a one-to-one translation anyway. The uses are all different, the zones are different, so we didn't see much of a reason to, to assure that they stuck one-to-one coming over. So what we did instead was, we, we tried taking a combination of the uses that are on the ground, but we tried not to give that too much credence, because that's not what you should be doing, you should be looking down the road and zoning properties what you think they should be zoned and for the highest and best use of that property. And so we paid a little bit of attention to what's there, but more, we paid attention to what we think would be the more appropriate zone on that property regardless of what was on the ground. I'm not saying you can't consider what's on the ground, feel free to if you want, but that's not what we did to create this. And so, well, one thing I wanna point out before we get too far down the road, is we've added a zone that you didn't see in any of your books at all. We added an office zone, and that was kind of a really quick brainchild of us three while we were doing this. Yeah, there was a few properties where we saw a, a strong benefit to allowing just the uses to be commercial office, that's it. Not even commercial, just offices. And I'll explain that in a moment, but that zone doesn't exist right now, we told John, so he's gonna have to find a way to write an office zone, but it would generally be just that, lawyers, tax accounts, medical offices. The, the uses that are very compatible with residential neighbors.
So it wouldn't be public zone?
No. No. We have a public zone.
I know.
We'll talk about that. So let me try to walk you through this real quickly, some of these are, are really easy to swallow, and some of them, we struggled with a lot more. So I'll try to point out the ones that we thought were really easy first, and that's mostly what you see here. And that's our general industrial, and I apologize if this is hard to see, we did this in erasable pencil on purpose so we could change it, but we will eventually create a digital version of this that's gonna be a lot easier to see. Should I stand on this somewhere?
Yes, thank you.
Is that better? I'm blocking you.
You're fine.
So a lot of these general industrial sites, we kept pretty much the same as they were before. There's two industrial zones here, basically the only difference between them is that in a limited industrial zone, everything pretty much has to stay indoors. Outside storage really isn't permitted in the limited industrial zone. Now, the general industrial, you can have a lot more stuff outside. That's really, in a super big nutshell, the only difference between them. So all these down here that are currently industrial, we pretty much left alone. The cemetery, we left alone, we took a lot of the areas down here, we did take a lot of the Talking Water Gardens and Simpson Park area and made them public, that's new, that wasn't that way before, but we figured that was pretty easy to do, so we made that public. You see a little bit of the new zone here, but we'll get to that in a moment. Up here, what we've done is we've expanded the commercial area that we have right now, rather than just the shop across the street, we're looking down the road a little bit more and thought it would make sense to have a cluster here of more commercial uses. Now, as you're looking at this, we don't have to respect property lines in order to apply a zone to it. There's no rule that says one parcel, one zone. You don't have to do that. It makes it like these here if you can, but you don't have to. And so there's a few places where we've actually broken that, and I'll get to those in a moment, but if you thought this whole parcel was too much for commercial, you could chop the zoning in half, put commercial on the front half and dumb the back half. And you can see we've done that here with this property. This is the manufactured home business across the street here, and they have a largely vacant area right along Old Salem. And so we split that and bifurcated it, because we figured the uses in the back would be okay to have outside storage, but the uses along Old Salem wouldn't. And so, along Old Salem, kind of explaining this, now we're kind of coming up to side here, we tried putting uses up and down Old Salem that are gonna kind of keep that area nice and clean for all the residents, because it's such a thoroughfare. So we proposed here that office use that we were talking about, because we think that's gonna make a nice job center right next to the retail and create kind of a cluster of density there in the middle of our city where we think that makes sense. And then up and down here, we've tried to keep all the colors purple right next to Old Salem on the industrial side, because that means everything has to be indoors. You're not gonna have people storing pallets and lumber outside right along Old Salem Road. Uh, there's a few places here where they had pallet storage outside, we figured that was okay to leave, because you can really only see that from I-5 anyway. And so we've left that what it is. Now, up here, we have Loves up here in the corner, but down on this side... So...
I gotta say, my legs are killing me.
This is, this is Loves here, but what we've done is we've expanded the idea of having a commercial center here. This is the trade-wind site across the street. We didn't think that having truck parking in that gateway to our community as the highest and best use for that property. We really think it's a gateway entry to the city, that probably would be better served through commercial. And so we're proposing to change that zone to commercial. Doesn't mean trade-winds can't stay there as long as they want, it's fine, but someday, we're hoping that would convert over to a retail use instead. Um, up here, in this corner, we've applied our mixed-use zone, and that's primarily because we wanna give a lot of flexibility to the folks who own that property right now. We wanted to change the uses, because right now hotel, um, hospital isn't a permitted use in mixed-use, we thought we would change that to add a hospital to that. At the same time, we limited some of the other uses in mixed-use.
Dropped single-family in.
We dropped single-family and duplexes from mixed-use completely, but we did that before, but we dropped duplexes too, to try and get an idea. So again, we're using zoning as a way to craft the community to be what you think it should be. And so that was our suggestion up here in this corner, to give maximum flexibility. Coming, kind of around the top now, I'm kind of circling around the city this way, up here, we've left a lot of the properties up here, urban transition. Now, urban transition is our rule zone, and I tried writing, you can't see, but it says rule here to help you kind of shortcut that. So farming is allowed up here, farming really isn't allowed in any other zone. And we've left the outskirts of the city in urban transition on purpose, partly because that's where large lots exist today, and that's the people who are farming today, and then partly because it's more difficult to get utilities out to those sections anyway. And so you're probably gonna have these developed as large blocks when they do go, and that will allow them to spread the cost of bringing the utilities across many different structures, so we figured for now, leave that. A lot of the zones here that are a little harder to read are our new residential low zones. Now, residential low is basically just ten thousand square foot lots, think of it that way. And so most of the subdivisions that have already happened, we've colored in as residential low. We took a lot of the places where subdivisions haven't really happened yet in these areas and colored them residential low as well, because we think that's the kind of uses we want to see going in there, and so we've left it that way. So these urban transition zones are really just holding zones, they'll someday be residential low with ten thousand square foot lots, but for now, we were proposing they stay in urban transition.
So, so that residential low applied to all those areas that aren't subdivisions yet?
Yeah.
That are in the one-and-a-half to five-acre, you know, range, that, that's where we were running into this issue with the livestock, and that's why we were saying, if we decouple that from the zone, now you can set a threshold instead, and saying their residential low density doesn't do anything to their current use. They don't have to hook up to water and sewer just because they're zoned that. They can't partition till they do, but it doesn't change anything.
And so a lot of the lots up here that were smaller, we figured it'd be all the sense in the world to put them in residential low already, even though a lot of these don't have connections to water and sewer, yet. And coming around here, before we jump into the belly here a little bit more, we, there's not a lot we can do with this wide swath of area you see here. It's, we colored it the same color it exists today, uh, it's almost undevelopable as it is, it would cost a huge amount of infrastructure funding for somebody to develop this, but we left it, um, general industrial. And of course, you don't see the overlays on here, but there's going to be a, a river overlay on there for the watershed for, well, Lambeth River, anyway.
Definitely.
Yeah. So we left that pretty much the way it is. Coming up here, you see we're now coloring the area behind us right here into public, and of course, our park is public. The lot next to the park, we kind of split that one, it's not split parcel right now, but we split the zoning on it on purpose, leaving the front half of it in residential low and the back half of it as a public, which could then someday be the park. Now, this is a real zoning stumbling block to get over as you're thinking about all this, just because something's zoned P doesn't mean it has to be public, not at all. Public does allow quite a few uses, matter of fact, you'll see up here, we have the old Grange Hall up here, and we figured the most appropriate zone for that would be public, because a Grange Hall is permitted in a public zone, with a conditional use permit, to be fair, but it's permitted. So don't think of public as open space or has to be owned by a governmental entity, not true. Uh, churches can go in public, so try not to get caught in that. And then the one part that we figured would probably be a little bit more controversial, but we thought we'd try it anyway, is here in the middle, we've taken in-zone part of this area, residential medium. Is that what it is? No, mixed density, sorry, mixed density. And this would allow a whole variety of different densities to go in, you saw that in John's zone. We've put this down here, and I don't think anybody had any heart for it being down here where the density already exists, but we feel a lot of this is single-owner, it's going to hopefully someday be within a very short walk to a school, which is where you wanna have densities. It would be a short walk to the commercial that we're gonna have here in the future, as well as job centers, so it made more sense to put some density there. We could've tried putting it over here more, but a lot of this area has already been subdivided into ten thousand square foot lots. And so to put more density in between and surrounded by ten thousand square foot lots is a little bit harder to swallow. a little bit harder to swallow than something like this where most of the property around it is undeveloped. And even though this is developed, a lot of it is one single owner who we've already talked to who is interested in listening to increasing the density on those properties. So we thought that would be an appropriate place to put a little bit of increased density.
With design standards.
With some pretty strict design standards, which we can incorporate into our code, of course. So we get the kind of development that you want to see if we made the concession to go multi-family with this.
So that's where all those duplexes are?
Correct.
That's where we're talking about.
Correct. But those duplexes could very... Not very easily go away, but they could go away, and you could see that whole area get redeveloped. And the lot lines all changed to become a more cohesive, multi-family project.
So getting the crutch of would of extensity include a modular home park? Would that classify it?
It could. It could. Right now, in our version of the proposed code, yeah, RM is the only zone that would permit a manufactured home park. We don't think there's a very big probability of this going to a manufactured home park.
I would agree.
It's probably a pretty low risk, but we want... We wanted to be sure that we didn't zone out the possibility of any manufactured home park above this line because the state might get us. And so putting this here is going to get us in the state's good graces to make it so that could be in more places. It's unprobable, which is why we thought it was a pretty safe bet to put it there as far as manufactured home parks are concerned, but that's kind of where we were coming from.
So you mentioned school. Where are you thinking?
I can't tell you that. How much information do you want me to share?
The Parks Committee's working. So we've had discussions with the school district on citing the school behind us in the next ten years.
There's a probability of a elementary school only?
Yeah.
Okay. Wasn't sure if it was K through A. Elementary school going right here. And it's classic planning ideology to try to put densities close as you can to the schools to keep the kiddos walking as short as possible, which is why this made sense to us.
So you're saying adding all the home parks to mixed-use?
Well, is it allowed in?
No. If it's allowed in mixed-use, that's a mistake. You're probably bouncing.
It's, um, keep going back.
It's allowed in mixed-density.
Oh, okay.
Right here.
Our higher-density zone, normally that.
Yeah, that's really the only higher-density zone we have.
The pink area is public?
I'm sorry?
The pink is public?
Uh, no. Public is green. So here, 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 here. Some of the wetlands areas.
Commercial.
The cemetery, both cemeteries, and Grange.
There's the tank farm.
The tank farm is here.
Right, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah, we're proposing that be commercial. We think it's a great spot for commercial.
For a tank farm.
You're not going to see a Target come in there, but you'll see some kind of neighborhood level commercial which we think is appropriate.
So residential mixed density is 5,000 square foot lots, and you're proposing putting 5,000 square foot lots there?
This could be 5,000 square foot lots, but it could also be multi-family. I think that zone permits multi-family. And so honestly, that's more what we were hoping to see, is some condos go in there. Because that's what Kevin wants to see.
But again, it can go back... It can go to 5,000 square foot lots.
Could. Could. Yep. And you could see that develop on a parcel-by-parcel basis. We're hoping not, but it could.
And that's from Caitlin over?
Yeah.
That's from Caitlin on over?
No, it's Bane, Amanda, and Waverly.
So it's almost nine. You guys don't have to give us feedback on this right away. You're welcome to come in later on and look at this if you want to closer so it's easier to read. That's fine, but I want to be respectful of your time as well. If you have any comments right off the bat, I'm happy to take those, but this is by no way due before gospel. This is just us taking a first pass at it.
Do you want to share what we talked about on the south end?
The office.
Office.
Oh, thank you, thank you. You're right. So we came up with a zone office, and the reason...
And also the school site.
Yeah, exactly right. We came up with a zone office primarily because we all sat around and scratched our heads figuring out what we're going to do with the school slash church down the street here. It's really not appropriate to put a retail use there because retail uses that close to the houses might create some problems with drop-offs and backup truck sirens and stuff like that. And we didn't want to make that any kind of industrial because you'd have that problem even worse. And so we figured an office zone would be a great fit there because that could develop at an office park level, and those generally make great neighbors. You're not going to have a lot of noisy people there. It should be a pretty quiet use, but yet it gives you a job generating use that's close to homes. Same idea behind that here, so we have the density. But then down here, we heard some concerns that Old Salem needed a little bit of work as far as its visual appearance was concerned. And so, one way we can approach that through zoning is we put a kind of a sliver, we're not sure, 200 feet deep, 300 feet deep, something in that ballpark, where we would have this office use right up along the road. What we would envision seeing there is more of the offices up front towards the road and then the storage of larger items in the back, so it would still be very general industrial. But we're hoping by requiring people to put the office section up towards the front, it might give us a better street appearance in the long term on Old Salem Road. Now, again, that's split zoning. You would be applying that zoning to just a portion of their property. And if somebody came in with a project, you'd probably have to find us being a little bit flexible with where that line was, depending on how big their office was. Don't know. But they could have the offices in the back section here as well because offices in general industrial are permitted. But really, what this does is sends a very strong signal to anybody along that route that if they do want to develop that area, the city's really looking to have the offices sucked right up against the street.
That's good work.
So where is general industrial at? Where do you have that one?
In the code?
Yeah.
Have to look.
It's all of the blue hash. It's our current general industrial.
Yeah, it's almost a twin. That's the one zone where we stated pretty true.
So where is it?
The existing zoning.
It's the blue.
It's the blue crosshedge.
It's the bigger.
Okay, so the reason I'm asking that is after our conversation last time, we said that RV parks and camping would be in that zone only. So that was what I was... That's where I'm going, is where on that map? Okay.
A great spot for it, if you can get to it.
All right. That was kind of my... Because I was sitting here going, "Oh my God, does that mean they're going to put it out here in front of Palm Harbor because there's land for sale?" And I was like, "Oh gosh, that's not a good idea."
Well, you wouldn't be able to do it now because we're changing the zone.
Right. But before it was industrial or commercial, I wasn't sure which. And I was like, "Is that going to be an RV park right here?"
Yeah, it's limited.
And that was my concern.
Yeah, that's limited industrial right now.
Which has to be indoors, yeah.
The blue area.
Yeah, the blue. I mean, not some blue up here, but not very much. And that was primarily just to make sure we cater to the existing users. We tried not to cater to existing users very much, but we figured in a few places, it was really appropriate.
Yeah.
Because those weren't businesses we wanted to chase away in the slightest capacity, and so we left them alone. Most of these guys that we made unlimited industrial are already operating within a building anyway, and so they're primarily going to be consistent with that. Shouldn't be a problem. There weren't many places where we deviated on purpose from the existing uses on the ground. There were a few places, but not a lot.
We did on the one parcel just north of City Hall here.
Yep.
No, yeah, right there. That right now is zoned residential.
And it's just one home on that property, but we don't think residential in long term would be the best use there. I originally had it colored green to match everything else, thinking maybe if a school did go there, they could take over that whole piece too and make that one big connection between Old Salem. But right now, even scheduled here as an office, that still makes sense.
This whole process could really bring a lot of heat in this office. Case in point, the Gordon's Trekking Lot is down there currently owned by Gordon Trekking Still is my understanding. If they decide to sell that to somebody in the trekking industry who wants to develop whatever, we're going to tell them, "No, your front half needs to be..."
Well, right now, all of it is.
Is what?
All of their property would be the light industrial. So it has to be indoor.
Limited industrial.
Yeah, limited industrial.
So...
Yeah.
But it is now.
Okay.
Vehicle parking might be something that's allowed in limited industrial.
I like what we're doing. That's the right thing to do, but still, at some point, somebody's going to walk in here and realize that my property has changed.
Anytime you rezone, everybody comes out in the woodwork. Which is funny, we talk about this all the time, because you could change the comprehensive plan designation on a property, which is really the only one that matters, and everybody would completely be asleep at the wheel and not notice, but you change the zone and everybody freaks out. And we'll have... When we move forward with this, we're going to have to send a Measure 56 notice to every single person in the entire city.
I think we're going to want to have some kind of public open house.
Yeah, yeah.
Just lane it.
Yeah. That's kind of...
A porter gets to hearing.
Make sure I'm on the town.
Well, one of the things that we did, if you look at the properties that we are changing, most of them, we would probably be increasing the value of. So for example, the property just north there going to office.
The church might be a problem.
Well, they don't own the property.